All right, quick reminder, anyone wishing to speak at first call, public invited to be heard will should add their name, his or her name, to the list that's outside. It is a regular session, so you'll still get a chance to speak if you don't put it on the list, but you'll have to wait till the end. So, let's go ahead. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of December 17th, 2019? All right? It's been moved and seconded. That was Councilmember Peck who moved, and Dr. Tim Waters who seconded. Let's go ahead and vote. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Christensen.
As I spoke with Dawn Quintana today, I'd like to correct the final line on the first page to cross out a point of order and replace it with two appeals, which is a correction to a correction we made before.
Is that what happened?
Do I have a second?
All right. I'll second it then.
Okay.
That's fine. All right, let's go ahead and vote. All right, that passes unanimously. All right, agenda revisions and submission of documents, and our motions to direct the city manager to add agenda items. Let's go ahead and, let's go ahead and just...
Mayor, if I might, you all have a substitute ordinance for item 8A. Just has a correction and a typographical error regarding the raw water requirement. The substitute ordinance is on your desk in hard copy.
Awesome. Mayor Protem? He was talking about zeros. Okay, okay. All right, and then, let's go ahead and turn the time over to Councilmember Peck.
Thank you. Are we now doing, I'm sorry, I missed what you said. Are we doing now submissions?
You wanted to, you had a question for council, so...
Yeah, I do. I wanted to suspend the order of the agenda because I have a question for council. I need direction. I put on each of your desks a letter to David Genova. It is from NADA, then the Northern Area Transportation Alliance. NADA has been working on trying to come up with what each municipality in this jurisdiction is wanting RTD to face, to address. So, on the reverse side of that, are bullet points that tell what it is we want in each jurisdiction. What I want to know is that, oh, on each bullet point, we're going to have subcommittee, and I'm on the subcommittee, to have goals, targets, and what we will do if RTD does not comply. So what I need to know from council, because I represent council at the Northern Area Transportation Alliance, do we want to go with what NADA is asking to do, which is to complete the peak service for RTD, to complete the inline? It is basically everything that RTD has promised to do, but has not done. So, this is the first time, actually, that this alliance has decided to work together as a group. And to me, that's pretty exciting, now that we're going to have a new general manager. We finally, after our director working for six years, have a 15-member board that is voting eight to seven in our favor. It's taken a long time. So there's some turnover that I think can be positive, as we move really hard on pushing on goals, timelines, and consequences. So, what I need to know is, does this council want me to represent you that way at NADA?
Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. As the new council liaison to the commuting solutions, I am aware that Mr. Genova's term is pretty much going to be completed within the next week or so, or two weeks. And so I'm just wondering, I mean, I'm completely happy to have you represent us, as far as NADA is concerned, and I do agree with the bullet points on the back of the letter here, but that maybe should be addressed to whoever the new interim director is versus Mr. Genova. Just a question.
Councilmember Peck?
So, I agree, and his retirement came as a complete surprise to some people, not to me. We had to address this to David Genova, because he is the director at this point. And actually, it's addressed to the board, because the board makes the decisions to direct staff. So, it is professional way to do this, basically, is to address it to the general manager. And by the way, all of those interviews have been completed for the general manager. They are those, I think there are five people they're looking at. They're online, you can go make your own comments, read their biographies, and give your comments as to who you think would fill that position. But as we do a complete turnover, I have confidence that we are going to move forward. And I see some head shaking over there.
So, are you, have they sent this letter yet, or they're just looking for council approval?
This letter has gone out to everybody, to state legislators, to the commuting solutions, to all of the elected officials of the municipalities in NADA.
Did council appointed you to NADA, right?
They did, but I want to make sure that you know what we're doing, and as a representative, you agree that this is the way to go. I feel strongly that one person on this council should not make that decision.
I move that we can sit, I move that Councilmember Peck, continue her efforts.
Second?
Councilmember Christensen?
Are we going to vote on it? I'm in support of this, yeah.
All right, let's vote. All right, that passes unanimously. Thank you, Councilmember Peck. All right.
Mayor, follow-up question?
Yeah.
So, there was a motion back in November for there to be an executive session before March 2020. Is that still in process, or...
I think so.
Further clarification?
May I?
Councilmember Peck, yeah.
Depending upon the way this vote went, would depend upon whether we needed an executive session. So, because everybody agreed that we should continue to work with the Northern Area Transportation Alliance on this, I personally don't think we need an executive session.
Let's just...
Since I'm the one that made the motion to do it, I feel like I should chime in.
I guess, I guess the only question is, my recollection was, we were going to talk about legal options with RTD. Do you still want to do that?
Well, part of the subcommittee on these bullet points, for example, and I'm only going to use the Peak Rail Service, because that's what we're interested in, part of the bullet points, and the targets, and the goals, and the deadlines, and then the what happens if they don't meet their goals and deadlines, NADA, as an alliance, has talked about legal action. So, I don't know, I don't know that, that would be part of my representation, and I would come back and let you know what's happening, and where we're going, and if RTD is making its deadlines, that we are implementing, and if they are not, then I think legal action would be, at that point, a good conversation. But because there's so much turnover in RTD, at this point, I think we should work with them, to see where we're going.
Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I think that we should still have an executive session, just so we know where we stand and what our options are. I'm often asked whether, you know, that we have anything to do but submit ourselves to whatever RTD does. And I also think that we have, in terms of city planning efforts around local transportation, that we have some very innovative ideas being brought forward, and if, that, those could also change our relationship to RTD. So, I would prefer to still have an executive session, just to discuss those matters.
Councilmember Peck?
It looks like on our retreat agenda, we are, we are talking about RTD. And I think that we could talk about, at that point, all of the issues around transportation within the city, and then determine, determine whether we need to go forward with an executive session. That's my input.
All right, so basically, Eugene, I think there's a motion. The motion still stands. We still, that's still council direction, but we're going to go have a retreat, and we'll change our mind, maybe. Sound good? All right, Councilmember, Dr. Waters?
Thanks, Mayor Bagley. The, if this agenda were ordered a little differently, and we were, if staff was giving, or council was giving direction to staff after proclamations, I would move to give staff some direction relative to one of the specific proclamations on their agenda tonight. So, I'm, I'd rather do it after the, we hear the proclamations. Would that be a motion for personal privilege, or...
Just, just make it.
Well, I'd rather make it then, than now, but it would be a, it would be out of the order of business.
And it has to do with the proclamations?
It does.
All right.
I'll wait then.
All right, sure. All right, let's go ahead. City manager, do you have a report?
No report, Mayor.
I haven't seen you for forever, Harold. How you doing? You doing all right?
I'm finally over my cold.
You got some more gray in your hair? Good. All right, let's go on to special reports and presentations. If we could have those who are here to receive the proclamation designating January 2020 as Cervical Cancer Awareness Month? Thank you, thank you. I'm going to start reading while you come down, and just stand at the dais. It says proclamation, proclamation designating January 28th, 2020, as Cervical Cancer Awareness, it says month, but it should be day, in Longmont, Colorado. Whereas cervical, cervical cancer is the fourth most common cancer in women worldwide, and whereas each year, more than 500,000 women are diagnosed with cervical cancer, and more than 250,000 die from the disease worldwide, and whereas in the U.S., more than 13,000 new cases of cervical cancer are diagnosed, and more than 4,000 women die from the disease each year, and whereas cervical cancer is almost always preventable through pap tests and HPV tests, and whereas HPV, the cause of nearly all cervical cancers, can be prevented when all cervical cancer, can be prevented when all cervical cancers can, hold on. Whereas HPV, the cause of nearly all cervical cancers, can be, can be prevented when girls and boys are vaccinated against the virus, and whereas January is Cervical Cancer Awareness Month, and the Longmont community is committed to educating the public about this disease. Now therefore, I, Brian J. Bagley, Mayor, by virtue of the authority vested in me, and the city council, the city of Longmont, do hereby proclaim January 28th, 2020, as Cervical Cancer Awareness Month in Longmont, and invite all to join us as we work together to protect all girls and women from this disease. Sign me. So, would you like to say something?
I would just like to say, thank you so much for helping me to spread awareness about cervical cancer and HPV. It's not highly known, and it's going to take people like myself, who are survivors, to get out there to spread awareness.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, can we take your picture with you?
Sure.
Great.
Nope, right there. We're going to come join you.
It's all right.
And I'm sure you can't see it at home, but this is the first time we've had our cool new logo on our proclamations. All right, so if we could have people who are, proclamation designating January 14th, 2020, as Healthy Drinks for Kids Day in Longmont. Long time coming. All right, this is a proclamation, designating January 14th, 2020, as Healthy Drinks for Kids Day in Longmont, Colorado. Whereas the health and well-being of children is a primary concern for the city of Longmont, and whereas overweight and obese children are at, are at an increased risk for serious health, serious health problems, including heart disease, type 2 diabetes, asthma, cavities, depression, and cancer, and whereas Boulder County's childhood obesity rates have increased by 43% since 2003, and whereas two-thirds of children consume at least one sugary drink on any given day, and children who drink just one sugary drink a day are 55% more likely to be overweight or obese, and whereas the American Academy of Pediatrics recommends that children aim for less than 25 grams, that's six teaspoons, of added sugars per day, and no more than eight ounces of sugary drinks per week, and those under age two consume no drinks with added sugars. Now therefore, I, Brian J. Bagley, Mayor, by virtue of the authority vested in me, and the city council, the city of Longmont, do hereby proclaim January 14th, 2020, as Healthy Drinks for Kids Day in Longmont, and encourage all to provide healthy, unsweetened drinks to children today and every day, to support the health and well-being of all children in Longmont. Sincerely, the Mayor.
Excellent.
Would you like to say something?
Yeah, I'll keep it under three minutes, I promise to respect your time. Good evening, Mayor Bagley and city council. On behalf of Healthy Longmont Coalition, with all these lovely people wearing orange in the back, we would like to sincerely thank you for declaring January 14th, Healthy Kids for Drinks Day here in Longmont. We really appreciate it. As a mom of these two great kids, Violet and Christian, and as a co-founder of the nonprofit St. Brain Healthy Kids here in Longmont, I'm becoming increasingly concerned about the health of children in our nation. My kids' generation is the first generation in American history to have a shorter life expectancy than their parents. In my kids' generation, one in three children are expected to experience diabetes in their lifetime, and for kids of color, that goes up to one in two. Here in Boulder County, are, the rate of children experiencing overweight or obesity increased from 16% in 2012 to 2014, to 26% in 2015 to 2017, which is a huge 10 percentage point increase. And that actually led Boulder County Public Health to declare childhood obesity a health epidemic here in Boulder County. Ensuring that kids have access to healthy drinks, such as milk and water, is critical to ensuring their long-term health. Having just one drink a day of sugary beverage increases their risk of cardiovascular disease, type 2 diabetes, liver disease, and cavities, which is actually the number-one reason that kids miss school, interestingly enough. In fact, kids, their number-one source of sugar in their diets is sugary beverages, and the average kid in the United States drinks 30 gallons of sugary drinks a year, which is the equivalent of one bathtub full. My nonprofit has hosted four public events in Longmont, where we were talking about the, the health risks of consuming beverages for, for kids in Longmont, and our coalition has been to many, many Longmont events, including, you know, the community, and Cinco de Mayo, and the fair. These kids came along and helped. We talked to a ton of people, we've reached out to restaurants, and the overwhelming consensus is that promoting kids' health through limiting sugary beverages and supporting the drinking of healthy beverages is something that really matters to people. And there's lots of ways to make our environment healthier for people, to make the healthy choice, the easy choice, for parents and for kids. For instance, families go out to dinner, or to, out to restaurants, four to five times on average each week, and most kids' meals come with sugary beverages. So, you know, even if restaurants started promoting healthier beverages, such as unsweetened milk and water, it would really go a long way in protecting our kids' health. So, our hope is that this proclamation will lead the city council in taking steps to ensure that our restaurants are promoting healthy drinks for our kids.
All right, well, you kids willing to take a picture with us? Oh, you got something to say? I'm sorry.
Thank you for supporting your proclamation.
You're welcome.
Thank you for helping us make kids healthier.
You're welcome. Let's take a picture. Come on. There's easier ways. All right, let's go ahead and move on to the next proclamation. It is a proclamation designating January 14th through 20th, 2020, as honoring Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Week in Longmont, Colorado. We'd like to invite those folks who are here to receive the proclamation up, and I think we got the wording right this year. If not, I apologize, it's always my fault. All right. A proclamation designating January 14th through 20th, 2020, is honoring Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Week in Longmont, Colorado. Whereas January 20th, 2020, marks the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Holiday, on which we honor Dr. King's unwavering fight for the absence of oppression and the presence of opportunity for all, whose sacrifice to sow the seeds for movement of peace, equality, and justice. And whereas across the nation, in the state of Colorado and in the city of Longmont, honoring Dr. King has become a week of service within our communities, events held throughout Boulder County are made possible by the commitment and dedication of many volunteers from diverse backgrounds. The combined efforts of these volunteers are a fulfillment of Dr. King's dream, and highlight the importance of the civil rights movement and the need to take action. And whereas this will be a week highlighting our five pillars of purpose: celebration, tribute, education, service, and solidarity, and whereas Ms. Kathleen A. Sanford's demonstrated commitment and dedication to service and civil rights is outstanding and commendable, her passion for equality is a definite reflection of Dr. King's legacy. Now therefore, I, Brian J. Bagley, Mayor, by virtue of the authority vested in me, and the city council, the city of Longmont, do hereby proclaim the week of January 14th through 20th, 2020, as honoring Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Week in Longmont, and invite all to attend the events honoring Dr. King. So, thank you very much. And you had better be Ms. Sanford, or that would be really awkward.
I am, thank you.
Okay, good, 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 good. Got it right, got it right. Okay, would you like to say something?
Just a few words.
Yeah.
And I don't have anything memorized, like all of those stats. Wow, that's fantastic that she did just a minute ago. No, I just wanted to say, first, I want to thank my friend Madeline Woodley for nominating And just, I can't, I grew up with a long line of strong women that believed in inequality, and I was always taught that, yes, there are good people in the world, and there are bad people in the world, but it has nothing to do with the color of their skin, has nothing to do with their nationality, or their sexual orientation. It has to do with how they treat others, you know, if they're respectful, if they're honest, if they're kind. And I just saw something on Facebook that really struck me, is if, don't ever look down on someone unless you're trying to help them back up. So, I am just so honored, and delighted, and thrilled, and shocked that I'm getting this, this award. I didn't realize it was, we're doing the same thing again this year, so we hope to have a good turnout again, but I'm not expecting a second reward. But thank you so much.
You never know. No, so, so it also, make sure that everybody, you're ready for Friday?
Yeah.
So, make sure that everybody who's supposed to be there gets an invite.
Yes, well, Saturday at Second Baptist, oh, you go ahead.
Hello, I am Glenda Strong Robinson, and I'm honored to be before you once again. I was one of those people who was fortunate enough, I didn't know I was fortunate at the time, but on March 28th, 1968, I was in that last march, at the, of the sanitation strike in Memphis, Tennessee. I was 19-years-old, a junior at Memphis State University, and this is what we're going to be remembering, because all of our lives have changed as a result of the Civil Rights Act of 1964, and the Voting Rights Act of 65. To that end, on Saturday at Second Baptist, from noon to four, we will be having a celebration. Our guest speaker is none other than Reverend Dr. Almela Starks Umosia, whose father was the chief strategist for that sanitation strike in Memphis. On Saturday, we'll be at, I'm sorry, on Sunday, we'll be at Kathy's Church in Lafayette, First United Methodist Church of Lafayette, and we'll be singing and doing a lot of stuff. Our guest speaker there is Honorable Judge Carolyn Wade Blackett. And Judge Blackett is from Memphis, Tennessee, as well. She's a personal friend of ours, and we are so honored that she will be in our fair city. And then on Monday, our finale is at Silver Creek High School. She, Judge Blackett, will be the keynote speaker there, talking about the man, the message, and the method. And so, to all of the community of Longmont, Lafayette, Louisville, Boulder County, all of Boulder County, please come and celebrate with us. Thank you.
Thank you, but you can't go sit down yet. Do you have something to say? No, but we can have a picture, right? Let's go.
So Kathy's family is here. All right.
Committee.
Mayor Bagley and members of city council.
I'm sorry, before we do that, Dr. Waters?
Thank you. I'm anxious to hear this report, but before we get that report, I think all of us are aware that there's a, those who brought the proclamation, or your consideration, tonight, also have some proposed language that would translate healthy choices into easy choices for families, into, into draft ordinance language, or at least the concepts. I'd like to direct staff to work with the representatives from the county who are here tonight, to bring us in a study session, draft language for an ordinance that would establish non-sugary drinks as the preferred first option on menus in restaurants in Longmont, with enforcement of that ordinance being left to the county, in terms of code compliance.
All right, it's been moved by Dr. Waters, and seconded by Mayor Protem Rodriguez. Let's go ahead and vote. All right, that passes unanimously. Look at that, a proclamation and a motion. All right, you guys just scored. All right. Dale, now let's talk about the Climate Action Committee.
Mayor Bagley and members of council, I'm Dale Rademaker, Deputy City Manager for the city. With me tonight is Annie Noble, our Environmental Services Manager. Lisa Knoblock is not feeling well, and so, we're going to pitch it for this presentation tonight. I wanted to start with, taking us back to October 9th, where the council passed the climate emergency resolution, and set forth, in the number of different actions, that they believed to be critically important. that they believed, uh, to be critically important for not only the staff, but certainly for the entire community of Longmont, um, in order to, um, take this community forward, in order to convert us to a socially and economically, ecologically sustainable economy, um, one that is very inclusive and is, uh, supportive of all here, and that critically, um, works towards the reduction of our greenhouse gas footprint, uh, both in quantity and in time, as rapidly as we can. And it acknowledged many steps and actions that the city was already underway with, such as the 100% renewable by 2030 and so on. Um, tonight, what we want to do is, is update the council. Um, you, you gave further, um, a direction, if you will, to that issue, I believe, back in December. And it was in the context of, we want to be sure that the staff understands that this is a crisis, not unlike the crisis and the emergency that we went through in the 2013 flood. And so, that means a lot to me, a, as a staff member. That is something where that triggers for me all kinds of, of, uh, actions that we need to be taking immediately. And so, we're gonna report on some of that work, uh, Annie's gonna give an update on some of the work going on with the task force, and then, of course, take whatever questions or direction council has. Tonight is intended to be fairly high level. It is not intended to drill down into the weeds too far, but rather to keep this issue both in front of the council, and equally important in front of the community, in the context of our collective need to educate and inform, uh, the community what we're doing, why we're doing it, and how they can help. So with that, I'll turn it over to Annie.
Uh, thank you, Dale. Mayor Bagley, members of council, I'm Annie Noble, Environmental Services Manager. I'm gonna give you a brief update on the actions that we've been taking to try to address the climate emergency. Um, I'm gonna start out with, uh, a diagram of our 2016 greenhouse gas inventory, to provide context of where our greenhouse gas emissions are coming from, and then I'm gonna update you on the Climate Action Task Force, and then talk about the city efforts that we're taking to address the climate crisis, and then we'll talk about next steps. Um, this is a diagram of our 2016 greenhouse gas inventory. So this diagram shows the greenhouse gas emissions from the city of Longmont, so not just city operations, but the city itself, um, as well as city operations. And you could see that, um, a major contribution to our greenhouse gas emissions comes from electricity, 50%. Um, of that, 31% comes from the commercial sector, and 19 from the residential sector. Um, after electricity, the next major, uh, contribution comes from transportation. And the thing I want to point out here is that, um, of the 29%, 13% is attributed to air travel, and that's commercial air travel, so from DIA, um, not our local airport. And then, the third major contribution comes from natural gas, and you could see the distribution of the total 18%, 11 is from residential, and 7 from the commercial sector. So that provides some context of, um, how we're looking at strategizing ways to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions. Those are our missions. The, I just wanted to point out that the full report, if you're interested, um, the 2016 greenhouse gas emission inventory report is available on our website. We're currently in the process of updating the inventory based on our 2019 emissions, so we're in the process of updating that right now. A Climate Action Task Force has been convened. It's made up of members of the public and city staff, city council members. Um, they have eight meetings that have been scheduled, two have already been held, and they came up with preliminary focus areas that are listed on this slide. The last meeting is scheduled for the beginning of April, and their plan is to have a draft report soon after that last meeting in April. Now I'm gonna go into some of the efforts that the city is taking to try to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions and address the climate crisis, um, focusing on the three areas: electricity, natural gas, and transportation. So, um, as far as electricity, um, you saw that 50% of our contribution comes from electricity. Um, as you know, we, we in Platte River Power Authority have a commitment to transition to 100% renewable electricity by 2030. Um, I understand that Platte River Power Authority has some contracts out for additional solar power. They're also looking at storage, and once those contracts have been fulfilled, we're looking at being at 50% toward our, um, goal. So that's pretty good. We also, separate from the Platte River Power Authority, but in collaboration or, um, cooperation with the Platte River Power Authority, the city of Longmont has issued a request for proposals to evaluate solar, the feasibility of solar panels on our city facilities. So we're looking at eight different sites. We haven't chosen those sites yet, but the, um, proposals are due February 11th, so we'll be evaluating those different options to look at the capacity that these various sites have, and how they could tie into our electric infrastructure. As far as transportation, um, the construction of the renewable natural gas project has been completed. It was completed in December. We're currently in the process of testing the equipment and starting it up, and, um, this will take methane gas from the wastewater treatment plant, and it'll clean it, scrub it, compress it, and then it'll be available for use in our sanitation fleet. This, um, will reduce the amount of diesel fuel by about 100,000 gallons a year, so that's pretty cool. Um, we're excited about it starting up. You'll get an opportunity to tour the facility at your retreat in February. I also wanted to point out that the city has four EV, electric vehicle charging stations that are managed by the city, and, um, they're free and open to the public, so, um, that's something that we're trying to encourage people to use. As far as city fleet, we've evaluated our inventory. Our fleet manager has, um, done an evaluation of the availability of electric vehicles, um, on the market, and, um, as Sandy would say, we're looking at leaning and greening our fleet. So what that means is, we're looking at reducing the number of vehicles that we have, and we're looking at, um, transitioning to electric vehicles. So any vehicles that are, um, scheduled to be replaced in 2020, we're looking at replacing them with electric vehicles, and if there aren't electric vehicles available, like trucks that are coming out in 2021, 2022, we're gonna defer the purchase of those vehicles. I also wanted to point out that the city encourages staff to telecommute, to teleconference, um, and so we try to minimize our driving. Um, we all have ecopasses, and people are encouraged to use them. So we're working on the transportation sector. In the natural gas area, um, we currently have a, um, contract underway where we're having four, um, of our city facilities evaluated for energy efficiency. So that's the Service Center, the Utility Center, the Senior Center, and the Memorial Building, and we're looking at how we can make those buildings more energy efficient. And when those buildings, after that has been completed, we're also gonna be looking at the possibility of fully electrifying those buildings, see what, whether that's a possibility. So that's currently in the works. We should have that information back in March and be able to move forward with some of that. We're also looking at the possibility of electrification, just the impacts and the costs associated with electrification, beneficial electric, electrification, so what that would mean to the city if we were to go to full electrification, what the cost and impacts would be to our infrastructure. And then I wanted to point out that, in conjunction with Platte River Power Authority, we have the Efficiency Works Program, which helps all residents in Longmont who are interested look at the efficiency of their residence. In 2020, we have requested a grant through the Boulder County Sustainability Grant, Matching Grant Program, to do an evaluation of equitable carbon-free transportation and EV readiness. So, um, we'll be bringing that grant, IGA, forward in the next several weeks. And, um, we're also in the process of hiring a staff member to look at commercial benchmarking, and we're looking toward the 2021 building code to see what comes out of that. Our plan is to bring you periodic progress updates. Our next update is planned for the, um, retreat. The information that we're getting out of all these work efforts, we're gonna incorporate into our 2020 work plans, and we're starting to look at how that will impact the 2021 budget. So with that, um, there are many staff here that are available to answer any questions you have, or if you want to provide any direction on what you'd like to see before the retreat, we'd be happy to hear that.
I mean, uh, one thing real quick, um, as council knows, uh, Joni has been moved into the role of the Assistant City Manager, and we moved building services into that area. One of the things that we're doing is, we had some bond projects that we were looking at in terms of fire stations and some of the other facility work. We're gonna take a different look at those, those projects and how we approach them from a structural perspective, and, um, many of the things about beneficial electric, electric, electrification and those concepts are gonna be brought into the development of those projects as part of the evaluation. And so, just so you know, some of those may be slowed down a little bit, but we want to actually do the good work to evaluate how we move forward on those projects.
All right, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Martin.
Um, hi, Ann. I, uh, I just wanted to ask, and I know it may make the graph look a little funny, the pie chart look a little funny, but I wanted to be sure that in 2019, in our greenhouse gas inventory, that we would use our share of, uh, PRPA's total emissions from generation rather than delivered, because I think we need to take responsibility for all of it. I'm seeing nods, so that's great. Thank you for doing that.
Uh, Councilmember Peck.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just to underscore the climate emergency, um, the, uh, the, the climate, shoot, the monitoring systems are up at the Union Reservoir, and today, we're some of the highest readings of methane. They were, uh, eight, up 8,000, which is huge. What is, do you know what the norm is, uh, for the EPA standards? But it is, um, there, they rose within the last 24 hours, which is quite alarming. So when we talk about this, can we bring in those readings from that website as well? Because I think that that is really important, and that's why we got those monitoring stations. So, um...
If I, if I could comment on that real quickly, uh, thank you for that, Councilmember Peck. The interesting thing is, we've just got those stations up and running, and we're already getting requests.
Right.
For the data. And so, we're, um, we're trying to do that smart. We want to make sure if we're sharing the data, that we're sharing it in a way that is, um, effective, and it's being used appropriately and all those things. So, the good news is, um, people in the business, uh, as they say, that are doing the research understand the value of this type of a endeavor coming in, is of interest, and is gonna be put on the map of any number of different agencies that are in the business of regional air quality monitoring. And so, you bet, that's, that's information we'll do, and we'll invite Dr. Detlev to come in and continue to advise us on, uh, again, he's the researcher, we're more staff, so we try to hook up with people that, uh, are experts in whatever arena, but thank you for that.
Sure, and I, I do have one other thing. When I mentioned at Dr. Cog that we were going to, um, put in these air quality monitoring, there was incredible interest from the other municipalities. But, uh, Annie, um, Lisa had reached out to me, and I, I was very late in replying, and she wants to know what Dr. Cog is doing as well as what we are doing, and can we work together? So I am just saying, if you would want to have those meetings, I am very happy to do that and give the information of what, what we're doing on a metro vision level. Thank you.
Mayor Protem Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. Uh, this is also to reference the pie chart about the inventory for greenhouse gases. Uh, I think it shows specifically that there is some logic behind the madness, if you will, as far as pushing PRPA towards the 100% renewables, because it, it shows that if we go straight to mass electrification of our automobiles, or mass electrification of our mechanical, uh, units, be it heating systems in commercial and residential real estate, that it all is, is dependent upon the, uh, delivery of the electricity and how that is delivered. And so, I definitely think it underscores the necessity for our board members at the PRPA level to continue to be pressing towards that 100% renewable as fast as possible. And so, I, I think that was a very, um, great graphic that was presented, and I thank you for that.
Uh, Dr. Waters?
Thanks, Mayor Bagley. I appreciate the report as well. This report, um, connects, or is related to, uh, Item 8L on the consent agenda, right? So I was gonna pull that item off with a question, but I think probably now is the better time to ask. But my question starts with, in the mix of activities that we see here, right, from the electrification to, um, deferring purchase of vehicles and until we have viable electrical, electric vehicles, et cetera, what's, what's in the report tonight that wouldn't be here were it not for the Climate Action Task Force? If you were bringing this report and we hadn't appointed a task force, what would we be seeing in this report?
Mayor Bagley and, and Councilmember Waters, not 100% sure how to answer that, because, um, you know, the task force is just getting underway. I think what the staff is trying to say is that, um, we absolutely acknowledge and appreciate that. We also believe there are things that we can and should be getting underway with now. And so, the biggest impetus for us to be acting, um, with the sense of urgency that we are, is the seven of you that gave us that darn clear direction, both on October 9th and again in December. So, um, I am absolutely, um, confident that the task force is gonna come out with bigger and greater goals for us all to work on. Our charge is, and as it is in any crisis, is to not sit on our hands, a, and wait for a report to come out.
And I agree, and I appreciate, and I appreciate you kind of framing this with the urgency associated with the flood. But, but the relationship between that question and, and Item 8L is, uh, you know, I, I don't, I have no qualms about engaging the consultant to help move the dial on things we need to move the dial on. But it does beg the question, uh, is, are we hiring, and this, I, same question I raised the last time we talked about this. Are we hiring a consultant so that everybody on the staff can continue with the 2020 work plan, as it was? And we're bringing in a consultant to pick up, you know, what, what these issues are relative, or tied back to the task force? Because if that's the case, I would, I would interpret that as same old, same old.
Right.
And we have a blip to hire a consultant to address things that pop up right now, as opposed to, we're gonna ask people to make sacrifices. We're not gonna, we're not gonna move the dial. The city, residents, we're not gonna move the dial if we're not all willing to make sacrifices. And so, you know, I, I'm certain I haven't made the, the number, or the depth, or the significance of sacrifices that I need, or we need to make as a family, although we're making them, in terms of electrification and automobiles and those kinds of things, and composting, et cetera, et cetera, all small things. But I think we need to be really explicit how we model to the community the sacrifices we're willing to make, in the interest of, of a much bigger objective, that we're gonna, we probably won't move the dial on, but if it's, if it's no more than symbolic, and that was my concern with 8L, that it looks a little bit like, uh, we're not giving, we're bringing in somebody to pick up the, the, um, you know, the ancillary work here, but the sustainability work, which we should have been doing two generations ago, or a generation ago, right? Is not, I don't, I don't want to see, I don't think personally that should be equated with the urgency associated with a crisis. Not that it's not important. It's way longer term in terms of what we be, we should be doing, as opposed to what we need to be doing over the next 12 months, and 18 months, and 24 months. Does that make sense?
Yes. Could I, can I respond just quickly?
You can.
Um, Mayor Bagley and Councilmember Waters, um, we get that. And so, when you, uh, ask the question, is it business as usual? No, we, we are changing our 2020 work plans. Again, similar to what we did in the 2013 flood. 2013 flood, guys, we, we pulled back and redid the entire capital program of the city. We pulled back and redid the entire budget going into 2014. So what are we doing now? We are convening a task force across the city of staff in, in virtually every area, and asking, what can you do in your area to immediately... what can you do in your area to immediately have an impact on a reduction of greenhouse gas? Some of it is small, but small with a multitude adds up to more. And so, we appreciate the sense of urgency. We have the capacity and the willingness to do that. And, you know, a sacrifice, and I'm sure Bruce, if Bruce would tell me, he would say, we need to get these vehicles replaced now because we're spending money to repair them. And what we're trying to do is say, let's hold so that we're not burdened with another gas-powered truck for the next 10 years. Let's darn it, if we can hold it together, and that means sacrificing a little bit. We should do that in order to make a better call when we have greater availability of electric vehicles. And even that's a much bigger issue than just buying electric vehicles. That also means looking at all the infrastructure around the city to make sure we're ready to charge them, refuel them, maintain them. It's the whole laundry list. And so, I give a lot of credit to the staff stepping up and saying, we want to be part of making this happen. We want to be strong partners with the task force and with the council. That's the message we're sending.
It'll be fun to revisit this then during the retreat, and, you know, what are the things that show up on that list that we're willing to say, we've got to find, we've got to let go of this and pursue other alternatives?
I think to answer that question, many of the things you saw in the presentation in terms of how we're going to look at our buildings, those are things we've been talking about that we're probably on a longer trajectory. What we've done is shortened that trajectory, which is adding work. When you talk about then, how is this other piece fitting in? We're adding a lot of work, and we're using our internal resources and the consulting resources to absorb that and move more quickly.
Councilmember Christensen?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I wanted to ask a question about the Powered by You initiative, which I think is wonderful, but I'd like to make a comment, too. I did tour that facility earlier this year, and I was very, very heartened by the comment of the fellow who was showing me around. He said, if the city council had not passed the restoration of the sustainability plan in 2014, we wouldn't have done this. The truth is that our city staff has been working even without that for a long, long time to bring all these things forward, even without a sustainability plan. But when we did that and then it was approved in 2015, that started the ball rolling for a lot of this stuff. So we, it may not happen, you know, immediately, but as you said, little by little, these small changes make a difference. And anyway, the question I was going to ask about those vehicles, we're converting methane, but isn't it still methane? We're converting it to compressed natural gas.
That's right. And so, we've got new vehicles that use compressed natural gas instead of diesel. So they are using compressed natural gas, but instead of us burning that. So right now, methane is produced as part of the wastewater treatment plant byproduct. And it is used, a little bit is used to heat the digester, which is part of the process. But the rest of it is flared off and burned.
So what is the byproduct of that? It isn't methane?
It is methane.
Oh, it is methane.
It's methane that we're using to fuel those trucks.
Yeah, okay, all right.
So instead of burning it, flaring it off at the wastewater plant, we're using it. So it's renewable.
I just think it's a wonderful project. Thank you for doing that.
Councilmember Martin?
I think I would like to clarify that a little bit in the sense that the difference between biomethane, even though it's chemically identical, is that it's not fossil methane. So instead of taking the methane out of the ground and it being carbon detrimental to the planet, it's carbon neutral because it was methane before. It's going to be methane again, or it's going to, so there's no net carbon introduced into the atmosphere. So that's the benefit of doing that. Took me a while to get my head around that because I thought, don't burn stuff, you know? But this is better burning.
All right, well done, thank you. All right, let's move on to first call, publicly invited to be heard. All right, let's go ahead and start with Justin Stober.
Sit down. Good evening, Mayor Bagley, councilmembers. Thank you for hearing me tonight and having me up. First off, Councilman, or Councilmember Peck, just to let you know, the background methane level is typically under about 1,900 parts per billion.
And I don't know what you're going to say, but if you could address the chair?
I apologize, sir.
Rather than individual council members, that'd be great, thanks.
Well, I was just adding, typical background methane concentrations are about 1,900 parts per billion. And natural gas development, especially in the area of Union Reservoir, creates a significant amount of methane, so that might be a reason that you're getting significantly high readings at Union. But to get to where I'm, why I'm here tonight, I'm here as president of the Prairie Village Homeowners Association. I'm here specifically to strongly urge you to reject the concept plan change that is Agenda Item 11A on the agenda tonight. I have prepared a PowerPoint presentation, but understanding my limited time up here, I will save that. But I would love to be allowed the pleasure to share that with you when the time is appropriate. To spoil the surprise, I will say, again, I'm strongly against said plan change. You know, just going to my notes, I will say, while you might not live in my community, I do, along with over 360 other families and homeowners. And I will say that this concept plane or plan change is essentially breaking a promise of sorts to our community. And while this development has been being developed and under construction for the last 15 years, you know, there's a lot of people that have made their home-buying decisions based on what the concept was, what the plat said, and what was planned, and based on what the planning department and the planning commission, they're unanimous, well, I wouldn't say unanimous, I had one vote in my favor, but their approval of this plan change is, in my opinion, abhorrent, and I think that it is wrong for my community. I'd love to give you more information. And again, in my presentation, I have a lot of very nice pictures that I'd like to share with you. And then, understanding that I am running low on time, I'm also here to urge the council to consider enstating an architectural review committee for future developments. Current planning processes do not consider what any new development is actually going to look like in terms of impact to the surrounding area. And I think that that is a big problem. We want to have a unified community. We want to have a diverse community, but at the same time, we don't want, you know, a speckled community where everything is different. No worries, thank you.
All right, Michael Seaton?
Well, I'm just going to use paper. But anyway, I'm Mayor Bagley and council, good evening. I would, my name is Michael Seaton. I live at 1220 Atwood Street, and I drive a school bus for the local district. I would like to make a few comments about RV camping on city streets and in support of.
Could you raise the microphone a little bit so we can hear you?
Okay, is that better? Sorry. I would like to make a few comments about RV camping on city streets and in support of the safe lot concept. I bicycled to work at the bus yard down by Safeway most every day throughout the year and have for many years, and through other areas of the city. And frequently, I've seen a wide variety of RVs parked on our city streets. Many times, the views of these are unsightly. For example, this morning, along Boston, north of, on the north side of Boston, between Main Street and South Pratt, there were probably about five large RVs and the same number of personal vehicles, which is okay, but one of them had a number of their items behind the RV and strewn on the sidewalk. And there are times when garbage has been left also, and that requires the city to pick it up. My understanding is, and maybe I'm wrong, but that the city prevents, has prohibits, excuse me, camping on city property. I think if this is correct, that it should be extended to include RV camping on city property, too. But the present arrangement that is in force, that residents can apparently get a permit to allow an RV to park in front of their house of a family member or friend who is visiting, I think should be continued. But I think an alternative needs to be presented also, and I think that could well be the safe lot concept. And it's up to council to determine how that would be done. But I just wanted to say that I have support for that concept because an alternative needs to be offered to not only those people who are living in RVs, but also those who are living in tents, because it's our obligation to help them. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. All right, Michael Udow. And for whatever it's worth, this is the first time someone put how they pronounce their name phonetically, so thank you. That's awesome. Mr. Udow?
Good evening, Mayor Bagley and members of council. I'm speaking regarding the need for a warm water therapy pool, rehab gym, and ideally onsite-certified physical therapists and exercise specialists at UC Longs Peak Hospital. I have contacted their president, Lonnie Kramer, and their advisory board. Have not heard back from them yet. I hope the council would be willing to explore such a partnership. Each of you should have received materials from Mrs. Quintana justifying the need for such a facility. The materials included numerous times-call articles on the need for such a facility and the national cost analysis research provided by an ad hoc committee from Boulder. City council may not be eager to enter into partnerships with private organizations. Therefore, an alternative option, though not as ideal from a health and wellness perspective, would be adding those facilities to an extended footprint of Longmont Rec Center. While I benefited from the warm water therapy pool at Longmont United Hospital bought by Centura, I now go to Centennial Pool and use their modestly-appointed exercise equipment and the pool. Therefore, I'm speaking in behalf of paralysis patients, joint replacement patients, and patients with long-term disability injuries who cannot tolerate normal pool temperatures. Longmont student athletes rehabbing from injuries would benefit from this as well. Select justifications include, a hospital is the safest environment for individuals going through rehab as a time-consuming and expensive ambulance ride for critical or catastrophic situations is avoided. 94-degree water, warm water buoyancy, aids in rehab and recovery time. The UC Longs Peak Hospital has valet parking, which is often essential for those patients previously mentioned. The Y is exploring building a warm water pool. However, the Y has no valet parking and limited parking at best. The Y includes a young, vibrant, active membership, which could create a dangerous scenario for individuals with balance and mobility problems. While the rec center is not in a hospital setting, it is closer to UC Longs Peak Hospital with no railroad track issues coming into play. This is a real issue getting from the Y to both Centura or Longs Peak Hospital. Finally, while building a first-rate facility is not inexpensive, when properly publicized and administered, hospital health and wellness centers are profitable, and the payback in wellness and mobility of residents will further generate income for local Longmont businesses. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, sir. All right, Rebecca Lamb?
Yes, I'm Rebecca Lamb. I live at 600 Kaufman Street, and thank you for having me here. My shirt says, Age Well. I've been a part of the Age Well, which has changed names since the early 90s. It began as Prestige Plus. And so, working with the senior center and the hospital, the therapy pool, I've been able to move around and keep moving and stay upright for the last, what, 20, 30 years that I've been doing it. And as we met with the children tonight, the sugar, let's keep everybody moving. However, with the closing of the pool and the physical gym, hardwood floor gym, we have to go someplace. Many of the people that I worked with, exercised with, we've been to the places that we have around here, but the accessibility to keep us moving, we're not finding. And so, I agree with what Mr. Udow just said. What can we do? Let's keep it going, and let's keep Longmont aging well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Lamb.
James Kenworthy, 107 Kerbu Place. My comments have to do with the residential metro special tax districts. The corporations have the world's business tied up in a sack. Facebook, Google, Amazon, the Koch Brothers, and so forth. They're making money so fast that Scrooge McDuck would be green with envy. But of course, that's not enough. They always want more. The next source of income for the corporations is the taxpayer's pocket. Imagine an octopus with its tentacles on your bank account. We already have five city buildings that are collateral in case the mall goes bankrupt. The rich and powerful have declared financial war on the rest of us. We're not supposed to know that. Financial, yeah, we're not. The, you know, corporate media. Financial war is a worldwide process. This little brush fire in Longmont is a small battle in the giant scheme. How many staff members will the city have to hire to babysit this case-by-case process of creating special tax districts? What would be their qualifications? How much will they earn? Who will pay? Jill and Joe Citizen? How will you legislate honesty? How will you legislate away greed? You can't. How many weeks have you used up debating this issue? One of the city council members have used up a lot of time, and your arguments, some of your arguments, are less than convincing. You mentioned the 90/10 success rate of decent students, no matter about the numbers. Somehow, you apply that rate to special tax districts. That violates the chain of reasoning. One group is young students. The other group is a group of subdivisions. They don't relate. Do you believe we can't think? Please stop insulting us with that kind of talk. Time is short. I was going to remind you of the, what we're all facing, but I don't have to. You've already heard it. It will be interesting to see who votes for these special tax districts. Two of you got elected, what, two years ago? And you did so by acting like you value, like you value the interests of the people. Apparently, you don't. Trust is fragile. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Kenworthy.
Hi, James Nielsen, 2727 Nelson Road. I'm here tonight just to make sure everybody understands there's a lot of talk about the environment and great. environment and great concern for the environment, rightly so. I wanted to just make sure everybody's aware of one aspect of the drinking water fluoridation. The company that the fluoride that's put in the drinking water here, the company is named Preon. They're based, their headquarters is in Belgium. And there's a plant, it's a phosphate fertilizer company. They have a plant in Georgia, I forgot the name of the town in Georgia. But this plant in Georgia, it's a phosphate fertilizer plant, they are required by the, when they're processing the fertilizer, they're required by the EPA to scrub out the fluoride because the fluoride is a toxin, it's a hazard to the environment, and it's not allowed to be released into the environment. So, this fluoride is scrubbed from the smokestacks as required by the EPA. I apologize. Horrible public speaker, I get nervous. I apologize.
Doing great.
Scrubbed from the smokestacks into liquid form called hydrofluoric acid. That acid is then processed into powdered form, and that creates the bags of fluoride that's used here at Longmont to put into the water. So, the point I wanted to make is what doesn't accumulate in your body, because it's actually a bioaccumulative poison where ingested over minuscule amounts over time accumulates in your body and is known to cause harm at uncontrolled amounts. And who's controlling the amounts of fluoride ingested? Nobody. The concentration of .7 parts per million is not a dosage. It's not... Whoever told anybody how much fluoride to drink, how much fluoridated water to drink in a day? And so, but my point is about the environment. What doesn't accumulate in your children's bodies, in your children's fast-growing bones, goes down the drain and gets into the environment. That's the point I wanted to make. So, it's toxic waste that's put in the water, it's a lie that it's good for your teeth, and it gets into the environment, so... That's the point I wanted to make.
Thank you, Mr. Nielsen. Sheri Malloy.
Good evening, Mayor Bagley and members of councils. Sheri Malloy, 2113 Range View Lane. I have some remarks, but first I want to express my appreciation and wholehearted support of 8Q, the resolution, continuing, expressing support for continued welcoming of the resettlement of refugees. So, to my remarks. I'd like to talk about the rift on this council you're all painfully aware of. I may be wrong, but I suspect none of you are enjoying your roles on council right now and are not feeling very good or hopeful about the future. The good news is that feeling crappy about the state of things means you care. That's a very good starting point. If we let it, pain can pierce and open our hearts. I'd like to read something that has helped me quite a lot when I get pissed off and angry, which I know you're all aware I'm quite capable of doing. This is the parable of the prickly porcupine. As it begins, "It was the coldest winter ever, and many animals died because of the cold. The porcupines, realizing this situation, decided to group together. This way, they covered and protected themselves, but the quills of each one wounded their closest companions, even though they shared their heat with each other. After a while, they decided to distance themselves, one from the other, to stop being wounded. As they did this, they began to die, alone and frozen. So, they had to make a choice, either accept the quills of their companions or disappear from the earth. Wisely, they decided to go back to being together. This way, they learned to live with the little wounds that were caused by the relationship with their companions. But the most important part of it was that the heat that came from the others, was the heat that came from the others that enabled them to survive the coldest winter ever." So, we're facing the coldest winter ever. Thank you.
I love stories. Thank you, Ms. Malloy. Gay Waterbury.
Good evening, Mayor Bagley and council members.
Can you just get that right up there?
Right up there?
Right up there. All right.
Gay Waterbury, 7264 Meadowdale Drive. I just want to add my voice in support of Resolution 2020-10.
Can you get even closer? I'm sorry.
Sorry. I have kind of a soft voice. I'm here to add my voice in support of Resolution 2020-10 to continue the program for initial resettlement of refugees in Longmont. Over the past few years, I have met quite a few individuals who have been dramatically uprooted from their communities due to war or due to threats against their lives or the safety of their families and have been forced to seek sanctuary elsewhere. I believe we need to stay aware of their plight and to extend to these many fellow humans who are suffering in this way, our continued support and compassion for them as they begin to put their lives back together here in the United States. So, thank you for considering that and extending that resolution.
Thank you. Scott Stewart.
Mayor Bagley, council members, good to see you all again. Scott Stewart, 229 Grant Street here in Longmont. I've lived in Longmont for about 20 years, you know, even with our porcupine issues and what have you, it's still a great place to live. And, you know, if not here, then where? And I got to tell you, there is no other where. This is really it. I'd like to start by saying, you know, thank you for all the attention to the quality of life within Longmont. I've spoken about quality of life before. The Climate Action Plan is dynamite. I noticed there was an omission of the airport within, with our particular airport within that report or that presentation. And my thought process with the airport is, we got a beautiful airport, we got people that love it. How do we create an airport that is not a greater impact on the climate? And how do we move forward with it? And I think there is a plan for the airport to not go away and for us to carry on. Part of that is the funding of the airport, and you're about to do a first reading approval of another lease at the airport. And I'll bring this up again, and I brought it up in the past. We're renewing a lease at the airport for a hangar that's already built, and the lease rate that we're applying to this renewal is a lease rate for land to construct improvements upon. I'd like to ask council to direct the airport advisory board to review the policies and procedures so that the airport can actually be funded appropriately and basically get more money. The cut rate that we have, and I think we're, what, second lowest on the front range as far as the rate in which we charge in order to build improvements, we're applying that to an existing structure and redoing a 20-year term lease at a rate that was meant to encourage building at the airport. If you guys could just advise the advisory board, because they take your direction, to look into this matter and how can we create efficiencies at the airport so it can optimize the amount of revenue coming in and it can continue to be self-supporting and what have you and not have to do, you know, those special little requests like discounts on fees that the city charges. I appreciate it, and it's good to see you all again.
Thank you. Lynette McLean.
Hi, Mayor Bagley and city council. My name is Lynette McLean, and I live at 763 Sand Point Drive. I just, I wanted to thank you so much for the study session last week. I learned so much about metro districts, and I really was glad to hear all of the information both sides. I really appreciate that. I wanted to first, before I start, announce that we have an event happening. It's What's in Our Air, The Path of Clean Air in Longmont, and it's this Thursday night at Sunset Middle School, 6:30 at night. And we're going to have Detlev Helmig tell us what's happening, share his data with us, and then we're going to hear from Senator Mike Foot and Representative Joe Salazar about what they're doing to help us clean our air in Longmont. So, it'll really be, it's going to be a good night, and I hope to see you there, and I hope you invite people to come. January 16, Thursday, 6:30 to 8:30 at Sunset Middle School. I wanted to just talk a little bit more about metro districts. I really felt like it solidified, the information I got really solidified my feelings even more. Residential metro districts are a tool that's extremely flawed, and they are doing development on the backs of our constituents. And I hear you talking a lot about equating library districts, arts and cultural affairs districts, preschool districts to metro districts, and they're very different from what I'm hearing. They are for everyone, and they're going to be voted on by the people. Whereas metro districts are not for everyone. They're exclusive. They're only for wealthy people. And you have the lipstick on the pig vet homes, you know, and some things like that that you throw in the metro districts to make them look good. But really, the workforce people that you're talking about are six-figure workforce people. They're not the 20% to 60% people who really need affordable housing. And, you know, they aren't affordable, they don't address affordability, they don't address homelessness, and I'm not suggesting that they should because inclusionary zoning ordinance with the waivers and subsidies already give a path to building affordable housing. So, I think we should stop talking about affordable housing if we're going to talk about metro districts. They just, they don't address that. They're set up by the developers who stand to gain personally. And all the people we heard, we saw here last week were people who were being paid or were benefiting financially from metro districts. You saw the lady that was the attorney. When she left, she took 10 people. I'm sure they were all being paid by the metro district. So, they're extremely expensive, they take a lot of monitoring, modification, it's very, very difficult to change them, to regulate them. And I saw, what the developers were telling us is that they're very, very complicated and complex, more complex than the council can be, the staff, and, you know, nobody's going to want to be on a board that does that.
Thank you, Ms. McLean. All right, Ruby Bowman.
Ruby Bowman, 1512 Left Hand Drive. I would like to follow up on a point from December 17 meeting. At the December 17 city council meeting, Mayor Bagley disputed a bullet point of the citizen complaint regarding his behavior. The last bullet point stated in part that Mayor Bagley covered the cost of the Cheney Cora request, and it set a bad precedent. In response, Mayor Bagley stated, quote, "I paid for my own Cora request. I didn't pay for Ms. Chaney's," unquote. I checked out the mayor's comments and found that Times Call reporter John Frye accurately reported the facts regarding Mayor Bagley's payment of the Cora request in the December 4 Times Call article titled, "Longmont Council Divided on Records Request for Personal Emails." Quote, "Cheney will not have to pay the $1,350 before the clerk's office can resume its more thorough examinations of PEX and Christensen's emails. On Tuesday night, Bagley gave Quintana his personal check to cover that expense," unquote. The mayor used a Bagley Law Firm check, number 3629, to pay for the Cheney request on December 3. The city staff confirmed this transaction to me and considers the Bagley Law Firm check as payment for Ms. Cheney's Cora request. On the following day, Wednesday, December 4, Mayor Bagley submitted his own Cora request, copying the language on Ms. Cheney's request. And according to city staff, Mayor Bagley was not required to pay for his December 4 Cora request because he had already paid for the Cheney Cora the night before. Contrary to what Mayor Bagley said at the city council meeting, he paid for the Cheney Cora request. And it's important for the mayor to get the facts straight. Mayor Bagley should also be transparent in disclosing whether the Bagley Law Firm is representing a client in this matter. The public has the right to know if Mayor Bagley has a conflict of interest. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bowman. Jennifer Wilson.
Good evening, Mayor Bagley and members of city council. It's an honor to be here with you tonight, and it feels apt.
People are pointing at their ears, which means you need to get right in there.
What?
Speak up.
Oh, I thought you meant they're pointing at my ear.
No, no, no. They're pointing to their ears. Their ears.
I was like, huh. That would have been horribly, horribly embarrassing.
Let's be transparent, open, and on the record, ears.
Okay, thank you. I'm getting over a cold, so I'm a little congested.
Jennifer Wilson.
Thank you. We'll start again. Good evening, Mayor Bagley and members of city council. It's an honor to be here with you this evening. I am not a resident of Longmont. I am here tonight on behalf of the International Rescue Committee, a resettlement agency that operates in the state of Colorado, as well as our two colleague agencies, the Ethiopian Community Development Council's African Community Center and Lutheran Family Services Rocky Mountains. It feels apt to be here tonight when you have proclaimed this week, or today, the start of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Week. And I'm here to ask for your support of Resolution R 2020-10. I do want to make a disclaimer that I'm here tonight to talk to you about Executive Order 13888. However, my communication with you about this in no way endorses the legality of that executive order. So, I'm here tonight because we do have new requirements around consultation with local governments. I have not been here before, not out of a desire not to engage with you or to be engaged in dialogue with your community, but rather because in years past, since the passage of the Refugee Act of 1980, we've had no such requirement to obtain written consent from local governments. Rather, we've had a threshold wherein if we resettled 25 or more refugees in a community in any given federal fiscal year, we would engage very rigorously with elected officials, with agencies in that community to really talk about what the impact of refugees might be on that community, how we could work in partnership, and how we could ensure that resettlement continues to be a beneficial prospect for that community. So, now, when we are looking at this need for local consent, we would appreciate your support. I think it's really important to understand that Longmont is not, nor has it ever been, a big destination for refugees. However, there are refugees who reside in your community. They weren't necessarily placed here initially, but much like your other residents, found that it was a very appealing place to be, a place where they could envision themselves and their families building a future safe from persecution, free from harm, and with opportunity to thrive and see their children thrive. So, as we look at federal fiscal year 2020, which we are now in, and we look at historically low admissions levels for the refugee program, we don't expect anything to change with local consent. We don't expect numbers of refugees to go up for Longmont. However, we do expect that if you were to pass this resolution, that business as usual would continue. Really, in not passing it, that would be a departure from what the norm has been. I do want to underscore, for those of you who may not see participation in refugee resettlement as a humanitarian imperative, that there are also well-documented economic benefits. In fact, the Colorado Department of Human Services published a study in 2017 that was conducted with a reputable economic impact firm, ICF, and it did explore the impact of refugees, looking at the costs as well as the benefits, and found that for every dollar invested in refugees, $1.23 in state and local tax revenue is returned, $1.64 in local economic activity results. In addition, those areas with the highest concentrations of refugees saw on par number of business establishments, number of payroll employees, and total payroll earnings, suggesting that refugees contribute to the shared prosperity of their communities. I thank you for your consideration of this resolution tonight and stand ready to work in partnership with you and answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well timed. All right, Kyle Henderson.
Good evening, Mayor Bagley and council, and a little self-conscious about people looking at my rear now, but we'll hopefully get through this. I'm here to talk tonight about the Peppler Neighborhood Concept Plan Amendment that's on your general business agenda this evening. I am the developer with DHI Communities of the seven-acre parcel that will be discussed this evening. I wanted to let you know that I'm here and available if you have any questions. There's a long history with this development, starting in 1999. That's what we're talking about tonight, is the concept plan that was approved back in 1999. And so we have a 20-year history. That's everything from four acres of land that was donated to the city of Longmont for affordable housing, and then became to the Housing Authority, which then became 120 units of senior affordable that's been built in the neighborhood. And this is the final seven acres of this development over the last 20 years. So we're excited to finally complete the neighborhood. We've been working on this since May 2017, and we're, feel like we're pretty close to the finish line and excited to finally make that happen. But like I said, there's a long history of how we got here, so I'm here if you have any questions as things come up, as you discuss it tonight, if you have any questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, it's been an hour and a half. Let's go ahead and take a five-minute break, if you don't mind. Anybody object? All right, great, let's take five. All right, let's go ahead and get started again. And that was just a call, no rush. Use the gavel. Bang, bang. It's always in this drawer. It's always in the drawer. Yeah, keep it for with me, with me. You may not have the gavel. My hair's a mess. I'm hungry. You look pretty good. All right, roll back. Let's go ahead and move forward with the consent agenda. Clerk Quintana, could you please read this for us?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Item 8A is ordinance 202002, a bill for an ordinance amending Chapter 1405 of the Longmont Municipal Code regarding raw water requirement policy. Public hearing and second reading scheduled for January 28, 2020. 8B is ordinance 202003, a bill for an ordinance approving land use amendments to the envisioned Longmont multimodal and comprehensive plan for housekeeping amendments. Public hearing and second reading scheduled for January 28, 2020. 8C is ordinance 202004, a bill for an ordinance designating Barker Nickel Home located at 719 Atwood Street as a local historic landmark. Public hearing and second reading scheduled for January 28, 2020. 8D is ordinance 202005, a bill for an ordinance conditionally approving the vacation of a 20-foot-wide drainage outfall easement located on Lot 2 of Block 1 in the J.M. Smucker LLC Plant Subdivision, generally located north of Highway 119 and west of Pinnacle Street. Public hearing and second reading scheduled for January 28, 2020. 8E is ordinance 202006, a bill for an ordinance authorizing the city of Longmont to lease the real property known as Vance brand Municipal Airport Hangar, Parcel H61, to James F. Duca. Public hearing and second reading scheduled for January 28, 2020. 8F is Resolution 202001, a resolution of the Longmont City Council approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and the state of Colorado for grant funding for the design of State Highway 66 improvements. 8G is Resolution 202002, a resolution of the Longmont City Council approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and town of Jamestown for the reallocation of Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Funds from Jamestown to the city. 8H is Resolution 202003, a resolution of the Longmont City Council adopting the city of Longmont Emergency Operations Plan. 8I is Resolution 202004, a resolution of the Longmont City Council approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and the city of Colorado Springs for an Internet Crimes Against Children program grant offered through the U.S. Department of Justice, Office of Justice Programs, Office of Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Program. 8J is Resolution 202005, a resolution of the Longmont City Council approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and Victim Assistance and Law Enforcement Board of the 20th Judicial District for grant funding for victim services. 8K is Resolution 202006, a resolution of the Longmont City Council approving the community incentive program agreement between the city and the Colorado Community Health Alliance for funding from the community incentive program to support Public Safety's project to identify more effective ways to respond to behavioral health issues in its community. 8L is Resolution 202007, a resolution of the Longmont City Council approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and Colorado State University for Equitable Climate Action Planning Facilitation. 8M is Resolution 202008, a resolution of the Longmont City Council approving an amendment to an intergovernmental agreement between Boulder County and City of Longmont concerning Boulder County's Environmental Sustainability Matching Grant Program. 8N is Resolution 202009, a resolution of the Longmont City Council approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and the Regional Transportation District for Employee Eco-Passes for 2020. 8O is Resolution 202010, a resolution of the Longmont City Council consenting to continued initial resettlement of refugees, Longmont, Colorado. And 8P is approved the 2020 City Council Retreat Agenda.
All right, thank you. All right, could we, I'd like to pull O, if that's okay. Counsel Member Christensen?
In addition to O, I would like to pull G and P, and just for comments, mostly.
G and P, okay. Counsel Member Peck?
I would like to pull A.
All right. Seeing no one else, do we have a motion for the consent agenda, less A, G, O, and P? I would move the consent agenda, as I stated. All right, it was seconded by Dr. Waters. Let's vote. All right, that, Dr. Waters? All right, that passes unanimously. All right, let's go on to ordinances on second reading and public hearings on any matter. First, 9A, ordinance 2020-01, a bill for an ordinance repealing and reenacting of Chapter 14.26 of the Longmont Municipal Code on Stormwater Quality. Are there any questions from council? Any presentation by staff? Seeing none, let's go ahead and open the public hearing on ordinance 2020-01. Would anyone like to speak? All right, seeing no one, let's go ahead and close the public hearing. Could I have a motion for passage of ordinance 2020-01? All right. Dr. Waters moved approval. Counsel Member Peck seconded that. Let's vote. Mayor Botham? All right, that passes unanimously. All right, let's move on to the items removed from the consent agenda. Let's go ahead and just move through. Let's start with 8A. Counsel Member Peck, I believe you pulled that.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I just have a couple of questions. First of all, when we get cash in lieu of storm, what do we do with that cash in lieu? Where does it go?
Mayor Bagley and City Council, Dale Rademacher, Deputy City Manager. The cash in lieu that we receive at time of final platting goes into the Water Acquisition Fund.
That's right. You've told me that before. So if we rebate that, how does that affect our water acquisition fund? Because the whole point of getting it is to be able to acquire water.
Exactly. And thank you for the question. The strategy, if you will, that we are bringing forth for you to consider is one that sort of dates back to 2012, when we did the water demand and supply study at that time. We realized at that time that the city's water utility is one of the biggest assets that the city has, and it could be an asset if council so chooses to use in order to advance other city interests and initiatives. You may recall, last year, you passed a similar ordinance in order to defer those water deficits for affordable housing projects. Again, in order to support and promote another key city initiative of affordable housing. The issue before you tonight is whether or not to extend that to economic development incentives. And so the math, if you will, to consider, and we sort of mentioned that in the fiscal impact note on the ordinance, is one that we believe there's additional financial gain to the city in order to leverage its water supply prudently to drive other city initiatives that you're trying to achieve. And so we try not to look at it as a dollars not coming in. It's really dollars deferred into water supply, but we believe that we have a sufficient supply of water that you can, again, in limited situations, utilize that particular asset of the city to advance those other actions that you believe to be important. And so, sort of to put it in dollars and cents, the current cash in lieu is, let's say it's $15,000. I know it's probably a little bit more than that. And so that would be dollars, if you want to look at it that way, not coming into your acquisition fund. And so obviously, if you're going to exercise this particular strategy, you'd want to be assured that the benefits being derived are far greater than that to the overall community. And again, they may or may not accrue to that specific restricted fund. They may accrue, for instance, back to your general fund. And so, again, it's just a strategy. It's one that council will have to make a decision on, again, by ordinance, anytime you want to exercise that. There's been a set aside of up to about 1,200 acre feet of water. I highly doubt we'll ever use that full amount. But it is one of the strengths of the community to decide whether or not you want to leverage you want to leverage it that way.
So I always look at, when we do things like this, as an investment in our city rather than as a detriment. But I think you answered my question, because the other part was, who is going to monitor this, that only 400 acre feet goes to affordable housing? And not the whole 1,200 acre feet? Do you monitor that?
Absolutely. We will absolutely be tracking that. That'll be in front of the council every time you're making a decision. And similarly, I would doubt that we're going to need that entire amount. And so, staff is always going to recommend that you be very prudent in making these decisions, and very sort of judicious. And so, that's why it is being structured in such a way that it's only the city council that can make that decision, and you can only make it by ordinance. In other words, you have to have a public hearing, you have to take public comment on it each and every time you want to exercise that particular strategy.
So I'm wondering, Dale, and this is out of ignorance on my part. In this ordinance, because councils change, would it be prudent, or has it ever been done, that you actually put the amount of the set aside raw water in the ordinance? So that when we're reading it, as you retire, the next person knows exactly what it is that has been set aside? Because sometimes, when I read the ordinance, it isn't very detailed about what it is we're looking at.
So Mayor Bagley and Councilmember Peck, I think you're exactly right. And so what you're doing tonight is you're really putting together and putting into play, if you choose to move forward on it, the ability to exercise this particular strategy. We haven't done it yet. And so when that economic development incentive, let's say, one comes forward, in that process, when you're approving those development agreements, it would be very specified in there. It'll say a certain amount of acre feet, X amount of acre feet, being offset out of this allocation that has been set aside via this particular ordinance. Same for affordable housing, as it would be for an economic development incentive.
Okay, thank you. That answered it.
A little more specific, so we know it's a finite amount as established in the policy. So we will start essentially with a spreadsheet saying, here's the cap. And then anytime this would be utilized by council, we would put a, okay, we're going to reduce it by 200, and then you'll see that rolling cap, because we have to monitor that in compliance with the water policy.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Councilmember Christensen?
Just to be double sure, so each time we approve this, it would have to be approved on a case-by-case basis each time?
Exactly, and by ordinance.
By ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
All right, do I have, Councilmember Peck, would you like to make a motion regarding 8A, ordinance 2020-02?
Yes, thank you. I move 8A dash, what is it?
2020-02.
2020-02.
I will second that, all right. It was moved by Councilmember Peck and seconded by Councilmember Martin, right? All right, just couldn't, I just heard a second off to the left. All right, let's vote. Councilmember Peck, all right, that passes unanimously. Councilmember Christensen, I believe you pulled 8G, Resolution 2020-02, a resolution of the Longmont City Council approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and town of Jamestown for the relocation of Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Funds from Jamestown to the city.
Very good. Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I just wanted to say thank you to Jamestown, and thank you to our staff. This is an excellent example of how governments can cooperate, and this wouldn't have been possible without the excellence of our staff in taking care of the FEMA grants and the expertise they developed in that. And that's, the people of Jamestown are very, very thrifty, so if they have money left over and are willing to give it to us in exchange for our expertise, that's an excellent trait. The mayor of Jamestown told me last month that he had taken on a new role as a gravedigger, so he's, you know, multitasker. So I think that's a terrific exchange. Thank you. And I would move Resolution 2020-02.
It was moved by Councilmember Christensen and seconded by Councilmember Peck. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I just want to give a special shout out to Peter Givens, fellow alumnus and classmate of mine. He's done a great job with the management administration of all the FEMA and funding that's going on throughout the whole process with the Resilient St. Vrain Project. So thank you specifically to Mr. Givens.
Feel the love, feel the love. All right, let's go ahead and vote. That passes unanimously. All right, I polled 8O, Resolution 2020-10. And when I originally put this on the agenda, the reason is because the United States, up until 2017, has been the world's leader in protecting and welcoming refugees. Republican President Ford did it, Democratic President Kennedy did it, Carter did it, Reagan did it, Bush did it, Clinton did it. Even George W. Bush allowed 70,000. And it got up to 110, and then recently went down to 18,000. But that's not what this is about. This is simply about, it's not about people showing up at our doorstep and asking for asylum. These are literally people that have been displaced from their homes, who are suffering persecution and violence. And if people do not step up to help, they will die. And so, the executive order that was issued by our president stated that in order to help, we have to do this. I want to help. I believe we should help. And I don't think that we're going to have anybody opposed to this, but at least not on this council. And I think that it's just important that we step up and do our part. So I actually move ordinance, or, sorry, Resolution 2020-10. Okay, it was moved by myself, and it was seconded by Dr. Waters, but we have people in the queue. Councilmember Christensen?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. Yeah, I would hope we wouldn't have anybody opposed to this. I wanted to thank the people who brought this forward to our attention December 17, Suzanne Bryant, Jilair McMillan, and to Jennifer Wilson for explaining that this never used to be necessary, because we weren't required to accept this. And to Governor Polis, who initiated this on a statewide basis. And I would also like to point out that, as a child, I lived around refugees from all over Europe in New Jersey. And because my father was from Europe, I got to know all of these people. They were all very hardworking. And if we look at the benefits in Colorado, the entire ski industry was really started by starving, by Norwegians who came to this country because they were starving in Norway. And then it was really upped after the Second World War by Austrian refugees. So that has been an enormous economic benefit to the state of Colorado. And it's just an example of how hardworking and innovative people are when they get a chance to live a life where they have some choice. So I think this is terrific that we all have, that we're all on board with this.
Councilmember Martin?
Thank you. I'd like to add a little bit of meaning to this. My specialty on this council has not been human services. It has been energy and climate. And with that, I think I know that what we can expect is to have unexpected conditions in this world in the future, and I hope that the settlement of refugees here in Longmont will, in fact, increase, because we've drawn attention to ourselves as a welcoming place. And I hope that when that happens, it will soften our hearts, because if our climate stays temperate here, and this remains a habitable place, then we're going to have a lot more. And we had better become a welcoming people, who loves the stranger, as in almost every religion I can think of, we are commanded to do. And we should also remember that we don't know what to expect, and that we could be the refugees. The people, we could have refugees from Nebraska. We almost did. So I'm really grateful for this chance to affirm our commitment to the people in distress. And let's all remember that we are all in this together. That's all I have to say about it.
Councilmember Idago Faring?
Thank you, Mayor. So I really want to emphasize, I think what Jennifer, from the Resettlement Center, Jennifer Wilson had stated, she best explained in a nutshell what, why we are working to bring forth this ordinance, or resolution, I'm sorry. And it is, last fall, our collective body of educators from the National Education Association, Hispanic Caucus, we looked at some of the, just some of the outcomes that could happen, especially if a mayor does approve that, yes, we'll accept refugees, but different communities within, cities within the state oppose of it. It's just going to create this chaotic, misaligned patchwork of laws and procedures that are going to be very difficult for the people, for the community as a whole. So I'm very happy that Governor Polis had stated his support, and that we are going down the line of continuing to service our refugee population. Over the years, I have had refugee students in my classroom. It is not uncommon, and it's not a large group of people, but they do need to be protected. So, yes, I am in support of this resolution. Thank you for bringing it forward.
All right, let's go ahead and vote. Councilmember Martin? Thank you, all right. That passes unanimously. All right, Councilmember Christensen, I believe you polled the approval of the 2020 City Council Retreat Agenda.
Yes, I realize that we set a date for this, but for many, many, many years, I have gone to the Chinese New Year celebration. And Rita Liu, who started this many years ago, has requested that perhaps we could change the date to the Friday. And I would like us to consider that, because it really, it kind of knocks the teeth out of her celebration of Chinese New Year, which for many years, almost all the members of city council have gone to. And I would just like us to consider that, changing it to Friday.
Want to make a motion?
Okay, I move that we consider moving the date of the retreat to Friday instead of Saturday. Oh, I'm sorry, February 7 instead of February 8.
Friendly amendment, rather than consider, can we just remove the word "consider" and change it to the 7th?
Up to you, Mr. Mayor.
I mean, friendly amendment to your motion.
Okay, well...
Then we can discuss it.
Actually, I think it'd be good to ask Sandy how much trouble this would be.
How much trouble would it be, Sandy? And by the way, it was also, there was a motion made, and it was seconded by Councilmember Peck, right? Or Councilwoman Martin, sorry. Councilmember Martin?
Okay, there we go. Mayor, Members of Council, Sandy Cedar, Assistant City Manager. You know, the event doesn't actually start until 2 o'clock. You could split your time as well. We don't have any guest speakers or anything. It really is staff time. So I don't anticipate that it would be an issue if you decided to do it either on Friday or to split it between the two. I think either way, I think the concern really was for Councilmember Idago Faring. It was to whether that would be an issue with school.
Oh, that's right, yeah, school.
So I guess I would defer to that, but from a staff perspective, either way is fine.
Okay, well, then I would defer to Councilmember...
Councilmember Idago Faring, let's hear from you. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
So actually, I was going to bring this forward to ask, since the consideration was made to accommodate my schedule, but in light of the conflicting time, I am totally okay taking that day. I have my annual leave accrued. I have the days. So I am willing to take a day on Friday, so we can be in attendance on Saturday.
What time are you, if you don't, what time are you out of school?
3:50. Well, but the final bell rings at 3:50, and then...
Then you have stuff.
And I have stuff. I never get out, like 4:30 maybe.
You sure about that?
Yes.
On a scale of 1 to 100, 100 being like, I'm totally for it, and 1 being I'm totally against it, where are you at? Is it like an 89, a 90?
99.5. How about that? I am okay. I'm totally okay, and yes.
So there's a, can we just by consensus agree to put it on Friday, so we can go to the New Year's celebration? Dr. Waters? Councilmember Peck? All right, so let's go ahead and change it till Friday.
So Mayor, just, I'll double check on the venue, but I did want to just note that the agenda venue has changed since the one that's in your packet. And the Waste Services Center Conference Room, looks like it will be open and ready for you at the CNG facility, and so we'll be holding it there, assuming that they'll be okay with us being there a day early.
Waste Services Conference Center, okay. Mayor Protem Rodriguez?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. So I am the newly appointed liaison to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. As they met last night, they were reviewing the results of the 2019 election concerning the competitive pool in ice rink facility. Outside of their thoughts on why the results were what they were, they were anxious to move forward, because in their opinion, continuing to consider recreation facilities for a community of this size is important, at least in their opinion. And they were very concerned with what the temperature of council is concerning this, because we hold a lot of the, say, purse strings and things like that when it comes to this. So what they're really looking for is for us to possibly include a conversation in our retreat, which I think could very easily work into the 2019 work planning at 10:15 a.m., according to the current draft agenda, where it talks about what can we celebrate? What have we accomplished? Is this complete? What is the plan moving forward? So my motion would be to include a conversation about council's thoughts about moving forward with allowing Prab to, or just council's thoughts on moving forward with either a new facility of some sort, or where we stand at as a vision concept. And so my motion would be to include that in that particular part of the agenda.
All right, there was a motion made to include a discussion in the retreat agenda, specifically to talk about recreational facilities, and what direction we should give to the Prab Board. And that was seconded by Councilmember Martin. Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I've been giving a lot of thought to this. I was a convert supporter of the pool and ice ballot measure, and I still strongly feel that the city is undersupplied with public recreation facilities. And I think we need two things. We need to immediately begin planning on something that is a better fit for the city than that proposal was, because I think that the form it took was maybe 60 or 70% of the reason why it was voted down when maybe another facility would have passed. And I think that the rest of it was probably in the way that we failed to communicate exactly what the facility really was. I know a lot of the constituents I spoke to thought it was nothing but a skating rink, an Olympic pool, that would always be rented out. So we have two things to look at. We need to look at what really the best fit for this city is that will bring us closer to the norm in terms of recreational facilities for a city our size. And also, we need to understand where we fell short in... And also, we need to understand where we fell short in terms of communicating to the people. And those are both matters for the council to discuss.
Uh, Councilmember Christensen.
Uh, in light of the interest, not just of the two people who spoke here, but, uh, many community members that I've heard from, in light of the interest of Warm Water Pool for Therapy, which that was the last, the only one in the county, we might be discussing that as a part of a recreation center, which would be appealing to, um, a lot of people in this city and a lot of people maybe from outside of this city.
Dr. Waters?
Thanks, Mayor Bagley. Uh, the idea of, of organizing some conversation around this, I think is a good one. Frankly, I personally had been, had asked, I've asked the mayor and I'd asked the city manager in the weeks after the election, uh, has anybody, uh, sat down and engaged in any kind of an after-action review? So we could capture what there was to learn. I don't know that that's happened. Certainly, I haven't been involved in it and I would assume other council members have not. So if we're going to add that, I think, I'd like to have some idea of how we're going to spend the time. And I don't want to, I don't want to get in the weeds. But for me personally, it's not going to be a use, a good use of my time to start diving into solutions if we don't start with understanding what there is to learn from what we did well and what we didn't do well in the run-up to the November ballot. So, um, I'm down with, with, we could, in fact, we could probably clear the decks of anything else. You know, that conversation alone, if we did a serious after-action review, could occupy all the time. But if we're going to spend our time on it, I'd like to spend it in a way that's going to produce something meaningful in terms of moving forward. And not just a, um, not just a, you know, a casual conversation. That's not what you were suggesting, I know, so. Uh, so if we haven't, if we haven't done that kind of work ahead of time, I don't know how we would be involved between now and then. But, um, it seems to me that that's where we ought to start with it.
Mayor Protem Rodriguez?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I, I do believe that, uh, Prab has a specific, I guess, direction that they, they want to pursue, but they don't want to go to the trouble of pursuing it if there is no appetite for the council to, to also pursue, uh, or, or support Prab in pursuing it. And that's just a point of information as far as saying, you know, they actually do want to open it up to, say, public input as far as what kind of facility the public's truly looking for, as well as talking about site selection and things along those lines. Because they felt like some of those were some of the shortcomings with the, the previous proposal and ballot initiative. And so they do have specific ideas. They just don't want, as I said, to continue down that line of thought if the city council is not interested in pursuing something along those lines. And so I, I guess, I was willing to go more into those specifics if, if the council is willing to have this conversation, so.
Uh, Councilmember Martin?
I think that these remarks are all getting to the same thing. What we should be looking at, uh, for the retreat is at least the beginning of an after-action review where we identify what the problems were, both with this proposal and with the way this, we approached promoting the proposal. And that, that could end with some light direction to Prab about what they should pursue in more detail. So I think we would all be happy with a discussion like that.
Um, nobody's left in the queue. I guess my only thought is, the part of the after-action review, I would like, I mean, there's some, there's some pretty vocal, there, there's, there's groups in town that provide, um, opposition or support for certain issues. I'd like to know what they think before we start. Because, um, yeah, I don't want to, I don't want to go down this path personally unless, uh, those groups are actually on board. Councilmember Peck?
I know that, thank you, Mayor. I know that, um, this would be a lot of work for staff to try to figure out a survey or something before our retreat. Would it be possible to throw up on Engage Longmont, um, without hiring someone to do a survey? Or, uh, just, just anecdotally basically to say, what were your concerns about that initiative? That was on the ballot. It wouldn't be a professional survey, and we don't have time or money for that anyway. But it would be interesting to hear what, and, and we can ask people to go out there and put out their, yeah, their thoughts. We all have email lists. We can all ask people to go out and take that survey.
Councilmember Christensen?
Uh, I think it might be useful to read the comments that were already surveyed several years ago, uh, before this and, um, see what people were actually, what they actually wanted. And, um, we still have that available, so, uh, that would be useful to look at again.
All right, there's a motion, uh, to discuss this and put it on the council, uh, agenda. Let's vote. Dr. Waters? All right, that passes unanimously, so.
So Mayor, just to be clear, the public outreach piece won't probably be finalized before the retreat, but you all would just like to debrief, basically, what you're talking about.
Whether or not we're, we have the, yeah. Uh, Councilmember Idago Ferring?
So this is more of what, a point of personal privilege question? So in the agenda, uh, I lost my page, um, where we're talking about our work plan, is that the time where we'll be allowed to bring up new ideas or suggestions of what we want? Or do we need to, to put on the agenda here tonight what we want to discuss there?
I think the agenda, as I read it.
It's pretty open. It seemed like it was open. I just wanted to clear, make sure.
Uh, making sure that our most vulnerable residents have the, I mean, every, every, I mean, I could not imagine if you had an idea that it's not going to come up. You, we're not going to be limited, that we're not following Roberts rules. It's going to be an open discussion.
Okay, okay.
Feel free to bring it up.
I'll do that then.
And if you've got, but if it's a big topic, like, hey, do we want to build an ice rink? We should probably prepare for it now.
No, no, I, so my suggestion was to, um, discuss the idea. So the city of Boulder has a, um, Human Relations Commission. Uh, I don't know if you're familiar with it. And so really, it, when I look at what their tasks are, it's very similar to the work I've done with the Colorado Education Association Equity Council, which was formerly the Ethnic Minority Advisory Council. And it really, not just addressing the issues of diversity in a community, or in, in my case, it was dealing with public schools, but, um, looking at issues of human and civil rights and how they pertain in policy that we set and, um, really, really addressing the needs of our, of our marginalized residents at a, a policy level, so.
Do you want to just prepare some information and fill out with this for like five minutes or so?
Yes.
Let's just plant on that.
Okay, will do.
So Mayor Bagley, just to clarify, at the very beginning of the retreat, we're going to do some equity training and ask questions about where the council would like to go. That would fit in perfectly there. Um, and then just like kind of laying in with what the, the retreat has set. The first part of the day is really talking about the progress that's been made and what else we need to look at for the existing work plan. The afternoon is all, what kinds of things should we additionally consider?
Yeah, cool. All right, so we've, that, that, we don't need to vote. We already voted. So let's go on to general business and talk about the Peppler Neighborhood Concept Plan Amendment, A1. Uh, Ordinance 2020, 07A, a Billford Ordinance conditionally approving the Peppler Neighborhood Concept Plan Amendment. And that's generally located between Alpine Street, Talarosa Lane, Winding Drive, and Canadian Crossing Drive. And it's one condition that we're looking at. Do you want to go ahead and let us know what we'll be voting on?
Good evening, Mayor Bagley, Members of the Council. Don Burchett, Planning Manager, here to talk to you tonight about the Peppler Neighborhood Concept Plan Amendment. Uh, just as a prelude to where you're going to end up after this presentation, really, you're looking at trying to make a decision on a note that was placed on a concept plan about 20 years ago, uh, that did not have very much specificity to it. That has been a little bit of a challenge for us as a staff. So we're, we're here tonight with some options for you that we are hoping that you will be able to give us some direction on or make a decision on. The first option, and again, I want to go through the options first because I think it'll help as, as we're going through briefly through the, the project. But the first option would be to the, to accept a donation of land that was proposed by the developer. The, which, the second option would be to remove the requirement of the donation from the concept plan. We have created an ordinance, which is Ordinance 02027A, that would do that with no conditions. The third option that you have is the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommended option, which would be to remove the requirement for the donation, but to place some restrictions on the property to make sure that it would stay open space and be landscaped. And that's reflected in the 7B version. And then the other option, which does not necessarily require any ordinance by the council, would be to provide us some specific direction if you want to keep the donation so that we can continue to try to help the applicant meet that obligation so they can move forward with their development plan. Again, as the mayor noted, uh, the area that we're specifically talking about tonight is identified in red on the plan. This area is adjacent to Alpine Street, again, northeast quadrant of the city of Longmont. 66 is at the top of the screen. 21st Avenue is at the south end. The current zoning and land uses, um, when envisioned Longmont was updated and the zoning was changed, the areas are circled in red on the plans. Those are neighborhood center, um, and residential mixed neighborhood, uh, in that area as well as mixed use neighborhood center is the pink. And then again, uh, residential mixed neighborhood is the zoning that surrounds it. This is a picture of the original concept plan that was approved back in 1999. The specific note is blown up and is at the bottom of the screen. It's Note 12. Trust me that it's word for word for what is in the very tiny text that's down on the bottom right-hand side of the, of the, of the picture. But it states, "A land donation to the city of Longmont for civic purposes will be dedicated within the commercial area. The configuration will be determined at the time of final plating." That was the amount of direction we were given to deal with. For those that are watching at home, the area that is hatched in red or shows up in red on that concept plan inside that red circle was the area that was identified for commercial on the concept plan. The proposed donation is shown on this screen outlined in blue. The parcel has been tilted to fit onto the screen, so north is at an angle. And Alpine is on the bottom of the screen at this point. The blue areas do align with where the red hatching was on the concept plan that I showed you previously, um, with the current zoning, that is residential mixed neighborhood for the actual zoning of the property. The areas are just under a quarter of an acre total, uh, in this proposal. We've had a couple of opportunities for public input. As was explained in the council communication, there was an error in the original noticing, so we did a neighborhood meeting twice. Um, we did have Planning Commission meeting start on one instance, had to stop that because of an error in the notice, went back, re-noticed, held a public hearing. I can say, as you've heard tonight from the President of the HOA, there is, I think, a lot of concern from the people that have come to these meetings and spoken recently, that they are concerned with giving up the, the donation to the city. So I, I do believe there is interest in, from the community, of keeping that donation requirement. Planning and Zoning Commission, after going through the review of the project, Councilmember Rodriguez was in attendance, so he could also add a little bit if you have some questions. But they voted six to one to recommend that the concept plan be amended, that that note be stricken, but that the property owner has to maintain the parcels, that they were showing for the donation, that they would be landscaped and that there would be a landscape easement on there to ensure that they would stay open space unless that easement was relinquished by the city council at a future date. In case of redevelopment in the future, we never know what, what could happen in 20, 30 years. And that was the thought on that. And that is reflected again in Ordinance 02027B. And again, these are the options. And I'm sure there are more, uh, and we are happy to talk about those if you have questions. But we wanted to at least give you a little bit of information so that you could consider this tonight and try to give us some direction on what you'd like to do.
Councilmember Christensen?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Burchett. Okay, I, to me, this is, uh, it is very difficult because it was first, uh, came forth in 1999, 20 years ago. It is my understanding from talking to the former city manager and the current city manager, um, today, that originally, um, the developer, this came under the former Affordable Housing Ordinance. And they were required to provide exceptional benefit. And that exceptional benefit was that they donated some land. But the land that they don't, that they did donate also went to Longmont Housing Authority, which was, which created Fall River, which is a wonderful, uh, development. So I don't understand these two tiny little parcels that are left over. By dividing them in two, they make it impossible for the city to use either of them because they're so small that there isn't anything appropriate that the city can do with them. And they are also in a location in the middle of the development, which isn't very useful to the pub, the general public. So I, I really, the land belongs to the taxpayers of the city of Longmont as a whole. That was the agreement 20 years ago, and I don't really think we should be giving up that agreement without something else. If they wanted to do a land swap, as you pointed out, uh, that's what happened in the Baker Development. Uh, I have no idea whether this, this developer isn't the original developer or this builder. So it presents a difficulty for them. They are, they took over something which had an agreement that they have to honor some way or other. And we also have to honor it, but in a way that is, um, acceptable to this, to the taxpayers of Longmont who actually own that land and should not just give it up without, uh, something in return. So I, uh, I would like to see if there are some other possibilities, like a land swap or moving the land, these two tiny parcels that they have, to somewhere on the outside of the development so it could be used for something usable by this, by the citizens of Long, the, the regular residents of Longmont, as well as the people in that community. And I've also read all the notes from the, um, uh, Planning and Zoning. There was considerable disagreement about whether this should be just removed as a requirement, as well as the, the HOA, who doesn't really seem to want it. I'm not sure why nobody wants land, but I think the taxpayers of Longmont want land. So, um, I would suggest that we explore some options about whether we can have one parcel somewhere in a way that we could actually use it. The problem to me is that in the original agreement, no, there was no specificity, specificity of how much land and where the location was. And that's nobody's fault here. And maybe not even the fault of people then. Longmont was considerably smaller and most of the developers were local and, you know, it was more of a handshake thing. And, uh, so the, this, the, what we have to decide on is, first of all, whether we want to give that land up without anything in return and irritate the homeowners association. Well, anyway, I think that's the, the one thing I would object to, just giving it up. I also would like to know if they, if there's any school in that area. Normally, a development has to provide, there is a school? Okay, never mind. Because that's normally one of our requirements. Okay, never mind, because that's normally one of our requirements. Okay, I, uh, I also would like us to stop using the term "open space" for undeveloped land because it's not the same as public open space, okay? Thank you.
Little O instead of big O.
Uh, Mayor Protam Rodriguez?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I, I don't believe that I heard a lot about this with the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, but I heard about some of it from tonight, from the representative from DHI, as well as it was just, I think, previously mentioned. Is the LHA land is not considered a land donation from this agreement? It doesn't satisfy the land donation agreement? But it was kind of mentioned like it was donated, and why would it not satisfy?
Mayor Bagley, uh, Mayor Protam Rodriguez. Um, so when the original developer, Lon LaRue, came through this process and when the affordable housing requirement was in place, my recollection from that time was that he made a proposal to the council to dedicate parcel, those, those two blocks specifically to the housing authority. There were some, I believe, restrictions on what the AMI, that they needed to be very low, uh, AMI, um, and, and for the housing authority to use for, uh, I believe for elderly apartments as well, was one of his things that he wanted to make sure it was being provided. And so the agreement was that that was going to cover the affordable housing requirement for that development. And that was how we proceeded under the old housing requirements, affordable housing requirements. My understanding, and Eugene might be able to help me as well as Harold, but my recollection is that the council heard recently, within probably the last few months, a request that Kathy Fedler brought forward to confirm that filing seven and eight, which this is one of those filings, was still covered under that original donation and did not have to provide any additional housing with these proposals. And that, and that was approved by the council, as I understand it.
So the civic, the civic donation is separate from the affordable housing donation?
Yes, it was, and, and I didn't want to take up a lot of time in my presentation, but what I can tell you is that over the years, what has been talked about, and what I recall from the discussions when this was at, because I've been here since ninety-nine, um, was that the discussions that happened were that this donation was meant to be in the commercial area so that there could be some kind of civic use. They had talked at that time about a police substation. They had talked about maybe a library annex or a, a book drop-off kind of building where you could go and pick up books that you maybe had reserved and things like that. Those were the kind of uses that were talked about. You know, the original, uh, the layout of that plan was what I would consider more of a Midwest feel with your town plaza in the middle and the commercial buildings, almost like the old downtowns that wrapped around that Central Park area. The vision was that these were going to be inline retail stores or, or buildings and that the city would be able to be given almost a lot that was a twenty-five by, say, a hundred-ish. I mean, I, the, the numbers are not specific, but that was the vision for that area. And we would be given property that then we could build one of those facilities and be a part of that commercial area. That, that was how that vision was looked at. It was looked as an old town redevelopment in a greenfield area. That, that's what it was. And it truly was a donation that the city would determine what the use of that property was going to be.
Okay, that answers my question. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Peck?
Thank you, mayor. So after reading the council comm and all of the, uh, additional, uh, documents that went with it, it, it seems like nobody knows what to do with this land, um, at all. And, but I don't think that we should give it up. I, I think we should keep this land. Um, and I'm thinking that there are two good parcels because they're, they're on streets. The setbacks have been, uh, provided already. And so is, if, in my opinion, it would be, uh, worth accepting the donation and looking at it for some sort of housing, if we can get that done. So with that, uh, I'm going to move to direct staff to determine with the developer on how we can configure the land so that the city can use it for affordable housing units. Do I have a second?
Uh, okay, Dr. Waters? All right, it's, uh, there was a motion made by Councilmember Peck, and that was just seconded by Councilmember Christensen. Dr. Waters?
Thank you.
Sorry.
So there's a motion on the floor?
Yeah.
Well, I'd be inclined to, I would have seconded the motion had you not added just the last part of that. I think there's some, I'd like to think of, of a more varied possi-, uh, uh, possible set of uses in, in affordable housing. Not that we don't care about affordable housing. Um, but I, you know, the idea of a substation does make some sense. I don't know how much ground you need, and I don't know what public safety would say about that. So does a potential childcare facility of some kind. Maybe more, more so than a, than a substation. I don't think we should give the la, I don't think we should forego the donation. I agree with the direction to the staff to reconfigure so that you've got a meaningful, uh, parcel of land beyond, uh, point one-three and point one-eight or whatever those numbers were, um, which would require some repositioning. Um, I just wouldn't want, I, I, I wouldn't want in a mo, personally, in a motion to direct it or to nail it down or limit it only to a, to affordable housing, given some other possibilities that I think would be of equal value to the community.
Mayor Protam?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I was wondering, from the staff perspective, it was, it was stated that not really any department particularly was interested. And was it because of the particular sizes and configuration of the two lots?
I, I think it wa, I mean, what I heard it was yes, because it's kind of hard when you have point one-eight and point one-two.
Right, those are-
Joni, did you hear anything else? But that was the issue I heard.
Mayor Bagley and, and councilmembers, you know, I generally sent out an email to all the directors to say, "Hey, here's kind of the, the proposal, here's what we're looking at, and here's kind of the vagueness of what was in this nineteen ninety-nine concept plan." And I think that everyone who responded, at least, and not everyone did respond, um, but most responded and said, "Gosh, I can't imagine how we would take on the O and M for something, even if it was land or parkland." Um, and certainly that will take some more, um, thought, um, from that team to think about what to do with it, but we can certainly go back to the drawing board on that.
Well, I would just imagine also even from a parkland perspective that two small disconnected lots would also be somewhat inefficient to manage from a similar perspective. And so without reconfiguration, to make them at least contiguous, I, I don't see real, you know, feasibility a, as it's, it's configured in the, in the proposed plat, as is, for the city to do much of anything with it. Because point one-three and point one-eight or one-five and one-eight, I mean, those are even, by single-family detached housing standards, fairly small. Uh, so, um, you know, I, I just don't see the particular amount of options for the city to make them usable. And I don't necessarily just want to see them used as landscaped open areas either. You know, I would like to see the utilization of space, uh, enhanced more than just left open. And so really not sure what to do here unless, and, and what is the feasibility of actually reconfiguring the site to make these two little parcels contiguous? And I think that's another question that we'd have to ask of, obviously, the landowner.
I'm, I'm just going to jump in. Um, there are people in the queue, but I guess my thoughts were, I remember back, I mean, so at the end of this term, it'll be a decade that I've served here. And I remember seven years ago, we were all talking about, we needed, we reduced, we took action to reduce the amount of parks that we were requiring from our developers because we didn't have the O and M money to keep it, keep it, right? So I look at these two, uh, pieces of land, right? It's on the original plat that was proposed that this area be donated. We didn't talk about size, et cetera, but there was no requirement that they, that they had to give a certain size. Um, you're looking at, what, twelve percent of an acre? You know, it's, it's like super small. And, uh, so I mean, there, there's also a reason we have a Planning and Zoning Commission that voted six-one to basically say, "Strike note twelve and make them pay to maintain it." Because I think if we actually, because of the size, I mean, if it was any bigger, I'd be all over the affordable housing aspect of this. But if it's just a piece of land that's just going to sit there, I'd rather require that the developer maintain it rather than, than us. Those are my thoughts. Um, Councilmember Martin?
Mr. Burchett, can you describe a little bit what the new developers or n- new builders intended use for this area is? It's, I, I have a vague concept that it's changed. But I can't, you know, circles, I can't tell.
Uh, Mayor Bagley, uh, Councilmember Martin, I thought you guys might have a little question. So we, we tried to put together a, a visual. I'm sorry it's so small. I'll try to walk you through it a little bit and use the mouse, so maybe it'll, it'll be a little easier to follow. So, so again, um, north in this instance is off to the right-hand corner of the screen. So if we turn this approximately forty-five degrees, that, that would be north about where my, uh, mouse is right now. We have Alpine Street, that, and this mouse is not cooperating. There we go. Okay, it's better. Okay, here we go. Uh, this is Alpine Street. And then the existing development is both on, uh, the east side of that street. Prairie Village finished that up, uh, the last few years. And then the initial, original developments are more up to the north, the original filings that Lon LaRue did. Um, and then the D.R. Horton developments that came and wrapped around down towards twenty-first Avenue are, are down in this end. And so what the applicant has shown is that they are using the commercial area. They're going to do two commercial buildings, uh, in this location. And if you've ever been out there, there's a patterned red, uh, concrete that has kind of a brick texture to it, cobblestone that makes quite a bit of noise when you drive over it. It's meant to slow people down. Um, that's in that location where they're showing these commercial buildings. They're doing six apartment buildings then around the perimeter. And those are three-story. There is tuck-in parking underneath some of them. There is at-grade parking that's between the buildings to try to, uh, break that visual ability of seeing that from the adjacent developments, uh, to keep it inside. Uh, they are showing landscaping that, that at least meets our requirements. The amount of open space exceeds our requirements for the city. And that's little O, not big O, uh, an open space and landscape area. And so that's, that's the proposal. So the areas then that we're looking at right now would be, in the original drawing that had the blue lines, would be here at this corner and then over here at this corner. There are some easements that are coming in. Uh, there's also an emergency fire access over here that's coming in, uh, adjacent to one of the access point or one of the parcels. I can try to give you more if, if that's not enough, but hopefully that gives you a general understanding.
Councilmember Christensen?
Thank you. So, uh, the original plan to have, as you said, a Midwestern kind of city center plaza thing is very, very different. And I was thinking, well, we could give, perhaps they could trade us, uh, for, uh, an office in, you know, a fairly large office in one of these commercial buildings. But that's, those are not very big commercial buildings. And they'll have a hard enough time renting those as it is, maybe. Um, I don't, um, when I look at this, the, the Pepler Neighborhood Original Concept Plan, what is up in the northeast corner? Is that part of that development or is that another part? Yeah, up there, that's right.
So-
That doesn't look like it's part of the development.
So, um, again, I didn't want to go into too much history unless you ask questions about it. So, so just for background, prior to this property being rezoned in nineteen ninety-nine, it was actually annexed originally for industrial development. It was meant to be a more of a business park, an area where we could have opportunity for some kind of industrial light, business light industrial uses. In order to again gain the council's favor and the Planning Commission's favor with the proposed rezoning from PUD industrial to PUD mixed use, the, at that time, the Longmont Area Economic Council had a concern with losing that area for business park and for future employers. They saved that area and left it as a business light industrial land use, and that was the proposal. When we looked and did envision Longmont and updated the comprehensive plan and looked at our land supply at that time, talked to the Longmont Area Economic, or, uh, Longmont Economic Development Partnership, as their name is now, the, the, the understanding was that that business kind of use in that area was not seen as being, needed to be kept. So that's why it was then changed to, um, I believe it went to m- medium or residential mixed neighborhood, which is a, allowed for duplexes. And then they came in through the process, once it was rezoned, to allow duplexes up in that area. So it is a part of the Prairie Village original development, but it's not a part of the north or south HOAs.
So it's not part of this agreement from nineteen ninety-nine?
I missed your first part, I apologize.
I'm sorry. It's not part of this agreement from nineteen ninety-nine, and has it all been built out?
Um, that was brought forward, that, this, that portion, the gray portion, was brought forward
Several years back.
by Kathy to confirm that, that was covered by affordable housing, the original agreement.
I think your question is, is does the land donation, is it specific to this parcel or does it apply to that one?
I'm sorry, that was, I, I apologize.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't make it very clear.
I've had a cold, so I-
Oh, that's all right, I-
The, it, it was specific to the com, to the commercial area, the red hatched area.
Yeah, mm, okay, because I was looking at the other end of the south, uh, um, southeast corner, which it seems to me is a drainage area. Is that correct? Okay, so we couldn't put anything there that would be any public amenity that would be easy for the, for residents who don't live in there as well to get to. That's what I'm concerned is that it, to be useful, it should be, although I, I think getting to it on Alpine, if it were something compelling, uh, people could get to it. But I, the idea is that it'll be useful for both residents of the city as a whole, as well as the residents of that community. Yeah, so the original agreement was specifically that it had to be adjacent to the commercial district?
It was to be platted with it as, as the note, uh, "The configuration will be determined at time of plating, dedicated within the commercial area." The, the, the concept plan identified that commercial area is the, as the red area. And those donations, as shown today, are within those two, it, within that red area.
Right, but that's not very commercial. It's mostly, uh, high-density residential now. So, yeah, I, I guess it is a quandary. I still think it would be nice if we could think of something to use. I just think that we, accepting these two, uh, when, when the original said "a land donation", it did not say "two tiny little land donations". And so they, this to me is not meeting the original concept, which was "a land donation", one larger area that we might be able to do something useful for the, for the residents of that area, whether it's a library annex or just some office in the, um, in one of those buildings that would be useful for the- those buildings that would be useful for the people of that town and for the residents of Longmont as a whole who actually own that property, so...
Councilmember Peck?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I, I want to explain a little bit about my motion. Um, I think that, again, this is land that is not usable, uh, unless we look at it as, uh, as, if we make it something usable. When we talk about a substation, a police substation, that pulls resources from the city, um, when we talk about a, a park that also pulls resources from the city, so it actually costs us more in this land donation. And my thought was if staff could look at this land as affordable housing with our height bonuses on the inclusionary zoning, with our, uh, smaller, uh, lot sizes, that perhaps we could then redonate it to Habitat for Humanity, um, or have a developer develop it with some height to it and get more affordable housing that would not really take resources from the city. Um, and it would work in with the whole development plan, because it is apartments, it is mixed-use. So that would, that is my reasoning behind this. Whether the lot size is too small for anything is what I would like staff and the developer to think about and, and try to work something in there. As far as a, uh, anything else, I don't think that the land is big enough to pull resources from the city at all. So, as long as we have land that is gonna be donated, I would like it to be used toward, uh, one of our work plans or something that we are striving for within the city.
Just for clarification, but the, the, the motion currently at stand says that we'd use it for affordable housing?
That is what I want them to look at it for, to see if that is a viable option.
All right. Dr. Waters?
Thanks, Mayor Bagley. There, we could, we could all speculate about what the right uses are. I noticed that Justin Stober is still in the room. He's the president of, of the HOA. Uh, would, would, I, I would like to hear if he has ideas. I'm certain he represents the community, has a much better understanding of what they see as the options are than we do. Uh, could we hear from him?
Does anyone have an objection? All right, the body would hear from him. What are your thoughts, Mr. President of the HOA? No, we're not giving it to you.
Bummer. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Would it be okay if I shared the presentation that I made tonight?
Does it go to what you guys want to have done? And how long would it be?
I can make it very brief.
If you can do it in two minutes or less, yes.
I'll do what I can.
All right? What?
So, two minutes or less. Just like to remind the City Council of the Longmont Mission Statement to enhance the quality of life in those who live in, work in, and visit our community. Prairie Village is boasted by the city of Longmont. Uh, on your website, Prairie Village has multiple photos of, of, or, excuse me, our neighborhood has multiple photos on your website. This is what people see when they want to know about Longmont. We, that's one. Here's two more, all of which are with a block from my house, for example. This is an aerial image of the neighborhood. It's a beautiful community, it really is. I, I will say, through the Planning Department processes and kind of what was envisioned when first, uh, developed, this is essentially what it was supposed to be. I moved five hundred feet to the south, and again, I'm not against the, uh, the development, but in terms of the Architectural Review Committee, for example, that I mentioned earlier, this is an issue, uh, with a lot of our residents. The promise, this is a promise of sorts in terms of the concept plan. Uh, I do understand over the years Prairie Village has changed, developers split HOAs, added new things, new concepts, but this overall is the concept plan. This is what, uh, through the last fifteen, twenty years, that homebuyers and families are looking at in order to make the decisions to move in and purchase property in the neighborhood. The plan included single-family homes, high-density housing, townhomes, apartments, et cetera, uh, commercial parks and rec and green space, according to the legend, uh, that Don showed earlier. And the land grant that would be used for civic purposes. Uh, the, again, continuing on the promise, we're looking at that area in, in the circle. At no point of what you've seen tonight is the new plan anything remotely close to this. Now granted, it was a concept plan, I get that, but this is what people are basing their decisions on and their livelihoods on. This is not what is being developed in Prairie Village. The developer idea of the, of the plan, you know, why don't we give them these two parcels? All right? This is what they want, all right? As you guys have already said tonight, these two small parcels make it completely inefficient and unable to be managed by the city, or really anything productive to be done about it. This is what they want. They want you to just vacate this, uh, grant obligation. Again, it's to forfeit, not just now, but forever. We will never have the opportunity to have a civic use purpose for this land grant ever again if we just give it back to the developer. The original plan promised the Prairie Village residents and the city surrounding Prairie Village that they were gonna have a civic use...
So I just, so what civic use would it be? What do you want?
Jumping ahead, um, let's see, I will say that you're not forced to choose between these options. We can go back and reconsider. Um, according to your two thousand eighteen work plan, uh, one of the goals was to pro- provide high-quality pre-K education to all, uh, children in the area. Uh, this could meet, meet both the commercial requirements, um, established by the rezoning and meet the intent of the plan, just a thought. You know, let's see, and I, another idea that was posed by our residents was a pond, similar to one that is over by, um, Rough and Ready Park, you know? What, think about fishing or, you know, uh, wildlife habitat, for example. Again, this could be incorporated into the design as a professional engineer, they need drainage, I mean, it, there's options here. We don't need to just give it up. We should have a civic use for whatever they are going to give to the city.
Besides preschool, fishing pond, what else?
That, that's what we have right now, sir. Honestly, the Planning Department, the developer, nobody has come to the residents of Prairie Village, nobody has asked for any, uh, public involvement. All of these concepts that were floated by the, uh, developer into the Planning Department has been between the Planning Department and the developer. We have not had a voice.
Okay, all right, great, thank you.
Thank you, sir, for your time.
Harold, would your staff be able to provide some insight and options for us, other than just these general ones? If we kept the land, what, what could we use it for?
So I think it depends on whether or not the land's reconfigured and how much space we actually have. So the first conversation would be, how do you, can it be re- reconfigured and how much can you get? It's question one. I think as you look at all of these uses, and so I hear a lot of questions about, um, parks kind of concepts and, and, and it's not as easy as, you know, so we have the pond at Rough and Ready, the pond's actually on the irrigation ditch, and so that's used to flow water from the Rough and Ready ditch in through to the golf courses. Um, and there's a, a fair amount of O and M expense associated with that, too, I believe, Councilmember Peck's component, uh, point to this. Council will remember when we talked about parks and we actually established the parks and rec fee, we were talking about the fact that we had a lot of parks planned, but we didn't necessarily have the resources available to develop those parks, nor had we historically prepared for the operation, operations expenses associated with those parks. So in, in, I mean, we can look at it, I'm just saying those are gonna be some issues that we need to take, we need to take into account. And, and I'm gonna be pretty frank in terms as we're talking about these, 'cause these are the core operational issues. When we talk about things like, um, uh, police substations, I know we've had those conversations regarding other properties, um, and how that is impacted, so we would have to look at that. You know, the option that's somewhat intriguing to me, if, if it can be reconfigured, is something for, um, the pre-K early childhood education component. If we're not the ones, I mean, then you have to come in and how do you build it, and how do you fund it, and who operates it, and there's a host of questions. So can we give you options, as we can? I think the precursor to that option is it has to be reconfigured into usable space.
I guess the, um, there's a current motion on the floor, but would anybody be opposed to having staff talk to the developer about the possibility of reconfiguring the land so we get best use out of it?
And then obviously, to the point, one of the easiest is if it's reconfigured, then there could be an affordable housing component that makes sense if you have the space available to do that.
Right, but still, it's, I mean, a third of an acre is better than two little portions. Um, would anybody be opposed to actually directing staff to do that? Can we go ahead and, yeah, could you withdraw the motion? All right, the motion's been withdrawn by Councilmember Peck. She, the microphone wasn't on, but she just withdrew it, so...
I'm gonna withdraw my motion.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Peck. So can you just do that?
Yeah, a couple of things. Um, so what I hear council's direction is you're pursuing Option D, to look at other options and reconfiguration. We need to contin- do we, we haven't opened the public meeting, though, that's next time, right? Do we need to continue it to a date certain if we haven't done that?
It's not even, it's just general business. So, just could, just bring us, talk to the developer, get as good a piece of land as we can, and then let's talk options.
Mayor and Council, Eugene May, City Attorney, so it's a ordinance on general business. So we are at first reading. I would suggest we continue, uh, this matter to a date certain, uh, to give staff time. Uh, I was conferring with Mr. Burchett, the earliest we feel we could bring it back would be that first meeting in February eleventh, I think.
All right, I move that we move this issue to the first regular session in February. All right, it's been moved by myself, and it was seconded by Councilmember Martin. Uh, I see, Councilmember Christensen, you've been in the queue.
Well, I don't know if this is appropriate, but I, I do like, um, Councilman Waters' suggestion about childcare. So I, I think what it seems to me that we are most interested in is either affordable housing or childcare, which would be, both of which would be beneficial to this neighborhood and the city at large, if we are able to get something reconfigured.
You, you also have the applicant here if you want to ask any questions.
Okay, all right. Councilmember Peck?
Um, thank you. Uh, has staff already talked to the developer about other, uh, plots of land within this development or reconfigure? Have you already had those conversations? 'Cause I don't want to send you back if, if we've already done this.
Mayor Bagley, co- Mayor Bagley, Councilmember Peck, um, what I would say is that with the lack of clarity and the restriction, it was hard for us to try to negotiate and to get something. But I do want to let you know that the applicant has some other ideas for how to use land and other donations that, knowing that there could be some concern tonight, they do have. If you wanted to give them the courtesy to have a, to, to talk about what those were briefly, uh, they would really appreciate that opportunity to talk to you for a second, if that's okay.
Next week is the open forum, right? Could we, could we give the developer five minutes to open next week so we could prepare? And just, you ready now? All right, come on down.
Get rid of that red light.
There we go.
I tried to make, yeah, there you go. Yeah, that's fine. Everybody's got a PowerPoint. Death by PowerPoint, I'm sorry. All right, so, uh, thank you for allowing me to, uh, to speak. I mean, it's interesting, uh, hearing your guys' conversation as well as Planning Commission, um, a few weeks back. They, they kind of mirror the conversations that we had back in, when did it start? March, April, when we, we came to staff and said, "Hey, staff, uh, how do we solve this? It's in there, we know that," so, and, and nobody had good answers, and so, so we did the best we could. And so, um, the, the two parcels that you saw that we proposed, those were actually, it was, it was, it wasn't, "Hey, here's bu- two parcels," it was, "Do one of these look better to, to you?" It was really kind of, "Which one would you like?" And, and so that was kind of the thinking. Um, and they were both really close to the, uh, the affordable senior housing that's now been built, the hundred and twenty units, um, that was built, um, as part of the original land donation. So, um, you know, the biggest issue that kept coming back and we kept hearing was O and M, right? It's, it's, it's that cost, that's why nobody wanted to take it on. And so, as we heard that, and we said, "All right, well, let's come up with a solution then," because, um, we felt like it was just kind of getting battered around. We said, "All right, we'll come up with a solution, and hopefully it meets everybody's requirements," which is civic need and doesn't put burden on the city. So that was really what we focused on. So with that in mind, uh, we came up with a proposal, um, where it'd be a fifty-six-hundred-and-thirty-one square foot, uh, very specific square feet, so this is, uh, this is well-designed and well-thought-out, and that's because our project is, is pretty much well-thought-out and engineered and completed. Um, so it's a, a pocket park with public art, and it would be located at the corner of Canadian Crossing and Tularesta Drive, I'll show you, or Lane, rather. I'll show you a map here in a second. We think it's positioned to, A, be, meet the requirements, and then also be, uh, near the general public, uh, with the senior housing, have the most density there of that, uh, of the development. Dedicated to the city of Longmont via property deed, designed, built, paid for, and maintained in perpetuity by the apartment owner. So that solves that component. Park would include outdoor art piece, um, meandering walkway, enhanced landscaping and seating, and it would meet the intent of the public land donation from, uh, the concept plan, and it would also avoid burdening the city with additional services or budget. So, this was, uh, we had our landscape architect put together a concept plan of what it, um, could look like. Uh, you'll see the, the center of the, of the space is, is the sculpture. Um, we have some benches, um, scattered throughout to be able to sit and look at it. We have pavers, um, plant beds, um, and then sidewalk that meanders through, uh, so it feels very welcoming for the public to come in and, uh, enjoy the, the public art. So, um, and that is the upper-left corner. I'm sorry, I don't have the, let's see if, no. This is just some examples of what the, the public art sculpture could look like. We haven't obviously designed it or picked it out yet.
Did you have any other ideas other than a pocket park?
We, we, this is what we came up with.
Okay, no, just, just curious, just curious, so...
Um, again, we, the, the prob- the problem was that with, without any direction and clarity, other than, you know, make a proposal and give us something, we, we've been plowing forward and we have a, pretty much a hundred percent engineered and completed project with building permits ready to go as soon as this gets completed, so, um, that's, that's our concern, I think, is, is the fact that we've been asking for, hey, just tell us what it required to meet this, and we'll do it. And, and, and so, and then when we heard, "Well, we're not sure," it's like, "All right, we'll come up with something. We, we, we want to be a good neighbor, we want this to beautify our neighborhood." This is what, we, we developed all the homes around us, um, so this is the final piece, right? So, um, anyway.
All right, great. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I've been in the queue since before this presentation, so this remark may not necessarily be quite on topic. Uh, I wanted to just point out that we have seen another concept plan where the developer is offering up, uh, a preschool as, as part of the development. And so I'm wondering whether, um, we could appeal to that developer to see if he has a chain or, you know, uh, a, a, a partner in completing that concept plan that runs preschools that he might be able to recommend to us.
Nobody's in queue. I guess my only concern about the, I mean, the preschool idea is only, is good, I, I mean, it's a for, most preschools charge a lot of money, and they're a for-profit business. I think what we need, I mean, just I keep thinking back to the... I think what we need, I mean, just I keep thinking back to those 500 kids that can't afford it. And so I guess I, I still like the idea of just having staff, I mean, it's 10:10 at night, let's just have staff talk to them. You know, I mean, I, I heard your concerns, I think we, we all heard it, you're ready to go. But at the same time, I'm hearing that, well, no, wait, 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 I only meant one of them, pick, not both. I'm hearing, uh, I, I just think that you guys should get together, talk, and maybe bring back some options for us. Is that okay? All right, so we'll look forward to next, oh, yeah, there's a motion for moving it to date certain, two week, first regular session in February, which should be, what, two weeks from now? Or three weeks? Well, three weeks, well, whatever the first regular session is, let's vote. Sorry, who raised, yeah, go ahead. Yeah, sure.
So the one thing you did say I would disagree with, which is, I, I don't have interest in reconfiguring the site because we've done that and we've come up with our best solution. So my concern is if we had to reconfigure it, we're talking.
And, and I get it, so at least this way. So this way you guys can talk to city staff about what, I mean, reconfiguring may or may not, I'm hearing no, that's fine, but the question becomes, is it one? Is it both? What would we do on those parcels? I think what we're hearing, what I've heard from my fellows, I mean, I was originally like, ah, no, just go ahead and landscape it. What I'm hearing from my fellow council members, even though we haven't taken a vote, is that they're interested in keeping the land and finding, finding a use for it that will fit with our council goals and vision. That, that's what I'm hearing, affordable housing, preschool, is that possible? What would we do? How would it look like? And so rather than keep talking about it, give it to you guys, the experts, and then bring it back.
Yeah, this will be one to help streamline it, I'll jump in directly with Joni.
Yeah, okay, cool. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, can we take, you guys mind if we take a few minutes to? Oh, yeah, let's, let's, what, are we voting? Yeah, date certain, yeah, let's vote. Thank you, Councilmember Peck. All right, that passes unanimously. Now, does you have a problem if we take a few minutes to stretch our legs? All right, great, let's do that. Let's try to bring this thing home, yeah. All right. Let's go on to board appointments for Longmont Housing Authority and Visit Longmont. Let's start with Visit Longmont.
Very good, Mayor and council members. Don Quintana, City Clerk, you have ballots in front of you. For Visit Longmont, you have three candidates and one regular member term ending December 31st, 2022. So maybe if you voted for one, please? You ready? Everybody ready? Idago Ferring for Davis, Waters for Davis, Rodriguez for Davis, Bagley for Spencer, Peck for Davis, Martin for Davis, and Christensen for Davis. So Elisa, Alice Davis will fill that seat on Visit Longmont. That takes us back to Housing Authority, which the mayor appoints. Mayor, you did ask at the last meeting for feedback, and so I captured that note.
Mayor appoints, but council ratifies. So what I was, what I was wanting to do is, it's late, what I was hoping we'd do is, so we had great applicants, great applicants. I was going to put, hold on one second, where'd it go?
Do you need my sheet?
Nope, it's right here, just pulling up the, my notes. I was going to appoint Tom Dubai to the unexpired regular member term ending June 30th, 2022. Lauren Sealy, the Boulder paralegal, to the unexpired regular member term ending June 30th, 2021. And then Jeff Moore, unexpired regular member term ending June 30th, 2020, which is less than six months. That's what I was going to suggest. And I thought that, I thought that Michael Stroh was who they wanted, but he withdrew. Amanda was great, it's just that the conflict with her being on the Boulder, Boulder Housing Partners, I just, the board wanted to avoid that. So those were, those are my thoughts. So that's who I'd propose.
Okay. Did you want to vote, or you?
Councilmember Christensen?
You're correct that as of the, as per state law, the mayor can only act with the consent of, of council in voting Longmont Housing Authority, or any housing authorities. I thought when we voted, we voted for Lauren Sealy, Amanda Ropec, and Arlene Zortman.
And Tom?
And there was one vote for Jeff Moore, but the majority of us voted for those three.
When, I have my notes, Mayor, if I might, from last time.
What?
From last time when we discussed this, and you asked council members to share their favorites or, you know, their thoughts. And the three were Lauren Sealy, Tom Dubai, and Arlene Zortman. Were the three that got those top from your fellow council members.
I'm aware, but in talking with the board chair and other board members, those are the three that, that they suggested. Jeff was the one that they asked for out of the three. I understand there's some history here, but he served on the board before for, I think, four years while I was on council. So I thought a five, five-month appointment would be appropriate. So, Councilmember Peck?
Yes, Jeff Moore did serve on the board, but he was on the board when we had the problem with the board and the problem with the Housing Authority. And when I asked him, did he know about that? Was he, and yes, he did, but he didn't report anything to us about any problems going on or, so I would not ratify his appointment.
Okay, well, let's go ahead and, let's go ahead and vote on Lauren Sealy and Tom Dubai then, as suggested. Then we'll go on and handle Jeff Moore, how we're going to handle Jeff Moore. So that way it's straight up, we'll just do it. So, all in favor of appointing Lauren Sealy to the, I'm sorry, all in favor of Tom Dubai being appointed to the unexpired regular member term ending June 30th, 2022? Say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, that passes unanimously. All, and then all in favor of ratifying Lauren Sealy to one unexpired regular member term ending June 30th, 2021? Say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? All right, that passes unanimously. And then all, and then all, those, it's getting late, I suggest Jeff Moore. All those willing to ratify Jeff to the unexpired regular member term ending June 30th, 2020? Say aye? Actually, that's what I, that's what I, I mean, that's what I want. And then if it's a no, then it's a no. So, all in favor, raise your hand, so that way we can vote.
That's easier, yeah.
Anybody? All right, there's two, and so all opposed? All right, five to two. All right, motion fails. Okay. What? Well, I'm going to talk to, I want to talk to Julian and Bruce again. So I don't have to appoint anybody at this point.
Okay, so we'll hold that one.
I just have to eat my crackers before we go home. All right, all right.
So we'll, we'll hold, hold the 1/20/20 seat, which we'll be recruiting for in a couple of months anyway.
Right.
Would you like me to bring that back at the next regular session?
Please.
Or do you want to let?
No, no, I don't want to, I just want to talk to the board before we do it.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, let's move on to final call. Publics invited to be heard. There's a lot of people. Scott, you have an opportunity to have a twofer here. No? All right. Anybody else? No? All right, let's go ahead and conclude and close out. Final call, publics invited to be heard. Mayor and council comments, anyone? Councilmember Christensen?
Two comments. I had the opportunity to tour the Fall River Building before it opens. I would suggest everybody tour it. It's a very, very nice thing, and Wendell Pickett was very kind to show me around. And secondly, I would like to thank all the people from Longmont United Hospital who wrapped me up and braced me up after I slid on the ice taking my compost out this weekend and damaged my knee. So thank you very much for being so kind to me.
Mayor Protem Rodriguez?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. First, I'd just like to thank my fellow council members and the staff members for putting up with me last week while the mayor was out of town. And then also just to, I don't have any calendared council commitments this weekend, but I will be out of state Friday through Monday, just for the information of my fellow council members. Thank you.
All right, nobody else is in the queue? I'm just going to say, so I was gone last week because I went up to the Wind River Reservation and Crawford White Eagle passed, who is one of the Northern Rappo Chiefs. And the one thing that I did not realize was going to happen when we talked as a council about a sister city relationship was the actual love, compassion, wisdom, and example that I would find in that man. And by far, the biggest impact, any person, any singular person, or experience, or issue, and we've had some big ones on council for me personally, whether it's oil and gas or renewable energy, just the way he viewed the world and the compassion he had for everyone was just amazing. And I've never been to such a big, a big funeral. It was, it was traditional Native American combined with veteran, combined with awake. It included ceremony, and it was just a, it was just a marvelous experience, the experience. So not only personally, but also as the mayor, just my thoughts and, and love go out to him and his family and the tribe as they, they, they deal with that loss. And the tribe is led by a pipe keeper and four, what they call four old men. And just, just two days after Crawford White Eagle passed, Jess Amos, another one of their four old men passed. And so the tribe is down two chiefs, and, and they'll be, much like the Longmont Housing Authority, they will be trying to figure out who fills those roles between now and Sundance. So whoever comes into that leadership position, we look forward to maintaining and building and augmenting those relationships. All right, so nobody else is in the queue? So Harold, anything?
No comments, Mayor, council.
Eugene, anything insightful, wise, and good to say?
No comments, Mayor.
Oh, so insightful and wise. All right, let's go home. Actually, anybody opposed to adjourning?
I'm adjourning.
All right, I second that. Anybody, all right, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all right, we're adjourned.